... and transfer the sum of $65,000 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Waterways dredging account to cover the costs associated with dredging 5,000 cubic yards of sediment from the Pompanoak Approach Channel. Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I have a couple of concerns about this.
You need your name and address, please.
I'm Abraham Brody. I'm over in Santewitt Woods. And I'd like to note that I've heard that the dredging could impact the fishing that's happening in that channel. It could also impact the community that's living there that is fishing off those waters. And we don't know if there's been an environmental impact assessment done for that dredging.
Okay. Anybody here from Waterways Commission want to tackle that? Okay. Anybody else want to tackle it? Mr. Golly.
Take a shot. That project has been fully permitted for a number of years. It's an annual maintenance dredge. It's done in accordance with the Fisheries and Wildlife annual periods where you're not allowed to dredge during fish spawning and migration period. So it's a common long-term practice and it's being done in compliance with the fisheries rules.
Has anyone consulted the Wampanoak population that fishes in those channels?
I don't think the selectmen would know that answer.
Well, it's an important concern.
Well, that's why they have a Waterways Commission. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Five is move, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article Six. See if the town will vote to amend the language of Article Seven, Section Six dash thirteen of the general bylaws regarding the membership of the Capital Improvement Program Committee as set forth below. I am not going to read that article. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend the language of Article Seven, Section Six dash thirteen of the general bylaws regarding the membership of the Capital Improvement Program Committee to read as set forth in Article Six of the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action related thereto.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on Article Six. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Six is move, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? In unanimous. Article Seven. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C regarding local authority to establish a speed limit in certain areas in the town or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Seventeen C regarding local authority to establish a speed limit in certain areas in the town.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Discussion on driving around the town slowly. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seven is move, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Speeders. It's approved. See if the town will vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen B regarding local authority to establish safety zones in certain areas in the town or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Golly.
Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the provisions of General Law Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen B regarding local authority to establish safety zones in certain areas in the town.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of four.
Discussion on Article Eight. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Eight, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Approved. Won't say. Article Nine. See if the town will vote to adopt the following bylaw prohibiting the operation of recreational slash non-medical marijuana establishments and marijuana retail is within the town or take any other action related thereto. And sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Golly.
I move the town vote to approve Article Nine as presented in the book.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend town meeting approval by a vote of five to zero.
Discussion on Article Nine. Just so everybody knows, this is a majority vote. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Virginia Hallen. I live in Ninety-Two Santewitt Pond Road in the Bayou Town. My question to the committee is, um... As a Cape Cod community, as a LPN, as a state employee, my concern is how are we going to service the medical patients, not just the recreational users who currently aren't receiving medical treatment? And as a town, where do the patients go? So what services are we going to provide here on the Cape? If we don't do it in our town, where are we going to be able to refer them as nurses?
Good. Mr. Cotton.
So, we do have medical marijuana.
We have a facility that is potentially going to be supporting it, correct? But at this point, for people who are on the medical piece paying $200 for a license and it not being covered by insurance, the recreational licensure that the town would allow these people to now not need that $200 quote "medical card." So my concern as an LPN who supports people with pain management, people with anxiety issues, where am I going to send them here on the Cape? I respect, nobody wants it in their backyard, that's not what I'm saying. I just want to be a part of a community that takes care of people with these issues.
I don't know if I'm answering your question that you really want, but is my understa-
The question is, is if we don't do it here in Mashpee, when are we going to do it in the town of Cape Cod?
It's my understanding, and we do already have an established medical marijuana facility here, it's my, you're talking about cost, recreational marijuana is heavily taxed, medical marijuana, I do not believe has any tax.
It's 35% taxed.
Medical?
Yes.
I'm totally re-
Don't get sick.
I know I've done research through the VA, not just through the community, over the past five years, helping people with disabilities of all range. And it's interesting to see what's happening in the medical field. And I just think as a town, because of so many people being active in this town, it would be such a prideful thing to be able to support these people.
My question being though, and I don't stand on either side of this, is where we already are one of the few towns that have medical marijuana. My question being, and I don't care either way on this particular article, is we have a medical marijuana facility already, which very few towns have, and we've supported it very much. I can't understand why someone with a medical condition would be paying more-
Because I know, I know patients who have FID cards that aren't getting medical licenses because they're afraid of losing that, and they need it for issues of anxiety. They've been taking Ritalin, they've been taking-
You're talking about a whole different thing, out of my-
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking a question.
Out of my expertise, sorry.
No, my question is if-
Do you have an actual question or another comment? Because we, people lining up behind you.
I'll pass.
Okay.
Barb Weeks, 86 Meadowbrook Road. I just want to know, what is the town going to do with the tax revenue if we have the recreational marijuana? Is it going to go into prevention for other drugs? Where's the money going to go?
Goes to the general fund, which ultimately the town will get the vote on after the selectmen decide. But general fund is the answer.
So it wouldn't go into helping other people with the opioids and stuff like that? Would the tax money go with that?
That would have to be decided if it passed.
So if it passed, the town would maybe put some of the money aside for, you know, substance abuse and stuff like that? Is that a possibility?
It is.
Yes, it's a possibility. And we already do, we do have addiction. And we can negotiate, host agreements with particular people who come in to get the licenses.
Okay.
That would all be part of it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Grealish.
Deirdre Grealish, 130 Pond Circle, Mashpee. I'm just stepping up to answer John's question, Selectman Cahalan's question, and I'm guessing that you've never needed to use marijuana for pain, and you don't know anyone that has. Otherwise, you would know the difference between trying to get medical marijuana today and getting it like you would an aspirin if you could. My husband suffered and the drug of choice was OxyContin. He'd never used drugs in his life. We didn't really know what even a drug was supposed to look like, other than relieve pain. And so I didn't even recognize what was it, that the drug was doing something that it didn't have to do, except that he went to a hospital where they chose not to use OxyContin, and they gave him morphine. He didn't have the same reaction to OxyContin at all. He could think, he could talk, it was a relief. The doctor said when we were leaving, I said, he doesn't, he wants to go back to work, he wants to use his mind, he wants to have some energy. He said, "Don't take the morphine home. Find somebody that can get you marijuana." And he told us what, it would be drops, it would be the oil, it wouldn't be the drug. You can't, I couldn't find a doctor that would prescribe it. I couldn't get one that would talk to me after I said marijuana. I didn't even know where to go. I don't know where the kids find it. It's very hard when you're our age, right? I mean, I'm sure they thought I was a fed if I actually tripped over a kid that had any. Probably thought I was a plant. So, anyway, he went, met big, important, well-named hospitals that continued to give him OxyContin. I had to monitor him all the time to convince them to stop. I mean, it was horror. And I truly wish I could have given him the last year of his life, the pot that I finally did find, eventually, no names, and it was the drops, it was the drops, put under his tongue because he was on a feeding tube, and they worked like a charm. We would forget what time I gave it to him because it would last so long. He said, "You know what? When you have a wicked headache and you take a Buffrin, you can't tell anybody when your headache went away." That had never been true of any of the other painkillers at all. So it was, it worked for him as well as Buffrin did. And I'm glad that at the end of his life, that was one less thing he had to deal with. But I'm telling you, trying to find, get medical marijuana is not as easy as it sounds. Also, if you didn't know, you can listen to the tapes at the Nixon Library, conversation between Nixon and J. Edgar Hoover about how to stop the Peasniks during the war, Vietnam War. And they talked about, you know, can you arrest them? And a couple of times, J. Edgar Hoover said, "You can't get, these people don't fight. You can shout at them, they're all on, they're all on pot. They're potheads. They, you can't get them mad about anything." After a while, Nixon said, "Well, then why don't we just make it a Class One substance and we can arrest them for having it on them?" Here we are.
My name is Hannah Nadel. My address is 98 Timber Lane Drive. I'm hearing a lot of medical marijuana issues here, but, so I would like to confirm first that we're talking about non-medical marijuana here. The idea, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So I just wanted to comment that it seems to me extremely hypocritical to ban recreational marijuana establishments when we have so many alcohol facilities. It's, to me, alcohol is associated with a lot of problems, and I think a lot of people would agree with that. And I use alcohol, and chewing gum is my recreational substances. I don't use marijuana, but I just don't think that we should be banning marijuana without banning alcohol. So that's my comment.
There's microphones on either side also, just for information. Yes, ma'am.
Yvonne Courtney, 35, Press Lane. I hear people talking about medical issues, and I'm not going to talk about medical issues because I'm not a doctor. The American Medical Association has not endorsed recreational marijuana. There are issues with federal laws, I'm not going to talk about that. I am going to talk about the fact that people think that there's a tax advantage. The amount of money listed is unrealistic. There's no guarantee that the town is going to make money from this. You have to take into consideration there are people who can get illegal marijuana, it'll be cheaper. People grow their own. So you're saying that this company is going to be able to make enough money to help with the tax burden? There's going to be cost for supplementing this in terms of police, emergency technician that's going to draw from it. People keep talking about money. This agreement that's made for the recreational marijuana is an agreement for a period of three years. After that, what happens? How much money the town is going to get? That should be looked into. I think that people should vote to keep the ban. I don't want Mashpee to known as the only town, or the pot town. The other towns on the surrounding communities have voted to keep the ban, and must be a reason. So a small town like Mashpee should not be the one that has recreational marijuana, bringing in more illegal drugs and so on. So vote yes. Thank you.
My name's John Hubley, 26 Belvoir Lane. I'm a 40-year veteran of the DEA. I spent 40 years wasting my time on marijuana. We never got anything, except to take my neighbors' boats and planes. I really honestly believe that this ban is going counter to the concept of initiative petition. I believe that the legislature was wrong in extending the town the right to ban it or not. I have issues on the next point, but as to who gets licenses, but the main thing is, is that the people in Massachusetts voted to allow this to happen. It's our job as a town to provide that opportunity. It's not a universally popular idea, but the way to stop that is by initiative petition, not by creating administrative objections in false walls around the process. I'd like to start in my 70th year, trying to undo what I wasted 40 years doing.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Sprout, 91 Cliniquisette Avenue. I'm here to speak, I'd like people to vote yes on Article Nine, to ban pot shops. I've known that we have a lot of people saying that there's an equivalence between alcohol and marijuana. But when you look at the statistics coming out of Colorado, there's a lot of combination of people who not only continue to use alcohol, but then they mix in marijuana. And you see the statistics where there's a lot more traffic accidents, a lot more emergency room visits. And at a recent forum in Born, Michael O'Keefe stood up and he said that you just cannot test for marijuana unless there's a fatal accident, and then you can do autopsies and find it. But the average age for kids to experiment with this substance is 14 years old. That's seven years before they are legally able to use this substance. And a lot of things can happen in brain development between the ages of 14 and 21. I realize we will be sacrificing some tax receipts if we do not vote to, or if we vote to allow the stores to come into Mashpee. But I am willing to sacrifice all sorts of tax revenue if it will prevent one more roadside shrine. We have enough. I want to see our kids safe, and I want them to live a long and happy life. Thank you.
Nina Oliver, 1 Carlton Drive, Mashpee. I just have a question. I don't know if it's okay to ask at this town meeting or not, I don't know, but-
You're here, ask the question.
Is medical marijuana, does that include smoking it?
Can, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Asia Atwood, 163 Captain's Row. Hello to everyone. I am a resident of Mashpee, been here for about six years. I'm also the co-founder of a company named Trelle Technologies. And the reason why I bring this up is that we are one of those companies that are what's considered an ancillary business. So we're not a pot shop, we're not trying to grow marijuana to sell cannabis, we're not trying to manufacture it for edibles. We're simply creating agricultural technology. We do a device that will train a tall plant to grow in a smaller space. So that could be for tomatoes, peppers, eggplants, all different types of plants, including cannabis. We're starting up, we've been doing this for about two years, we have a prototype, and now we're looking at the point of trying to move from our garage type of, you know, setup to get an actual commercial space. So if I want to do that, and I want to further develop my product for growing cannabis, I have to also get a license, I have to get a cultivation license. I have to pay the same amount of fees as all the other people are paying that are actually selling their cannabis. And I have to have a host community agreement with the town of Mashpee if this actually passes. So when we're banning, and this is a question, if we ban today, are we also banning me?
I would say no. But town council says yes. The answer is yes.
So we're not, it's not just about banning retail pot shops, it's about banning business opportunities. It's also about ensuring that the illicit market gets a chance to continue to sell to our youth, that we don't have a chance to test what's out there, that it doesn't go to a lab. This is not just about pot shops. It's about making sure that this substance that is already out there is safe and accessible, and that people that want to get involved in this new industry have a chance to do so with the inclusion of the host community agreement. So we would come back to the town and say, "This is what we want to do, this is where we want to locate. Is it okay with you? Is it okay with our neighbors?" This is just not about a store opening up in the middle of Mashpee Commons selling joints. I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nicole Bartlett, 28 Sampson's Mill Road. My question relates to what the previous person just said. If we vote to ban, so if we, if we voted to, if we voted against the ban and restricted the number to the amount of liquor license we have, the next article, that would allow us one marijuana establishment for the town of Mashpee. And is that right?
Correct, this is currently.
Okay. So in Brewster, when they allowed this, their ratio of liquor licenses was higher. So they, they have three marijuana establishes, establishments in Brewster, right? So one of those is Cape Cod Grow Lab, which is this cultivation, excuse me, cultivation, manufacturing, and transport. They have something like 9,000, 10,000, about 11,000 square foot in Brewster. And they, you know, they have to employ, they established all these rules with the town. So I guess what I'm saying is, they have that place, they have a retail establishment, and then they have a medical natural healing place, I think. If we vote to uphold the ban, do we never get to decide what, if any, of those other entities could exist in Mashpee? Or do we still have the opportunity, if we don't prohibit it, do we have the opportunity to look at a place that manufactures or cultivates marijuana but doesn't actually establish a pot shop in this town?
Okay. So the answer would be, for this purpose, this question, this article would prohibit the cultivation or the other facilities that you're talking about. It doesn't stop another article from being submitted at some later date. But this article tonight would.
So if we vote it down, does that mean we're allowing a pot shop? Or does it mean we allow some thing that is later to be determined?
Town Council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The purpose of this proposed article tonight is to ban or prohibit all marijuana establishments as defined by general law and the regulations. A marijuana establishment which would be banned if this article passes would include a marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratories, marijuana product manufacturers, marijuana retailers, or any other type of licensed marijuana-related business. It does not prohibit medical marijuana facilities, that's governed by a different statute. But a yes vote on this prohibition article would ban or prohibit all of the aforementioned types of marijuana uses.
Okay. I'm clear on what happens if we vote yes. What I'm asking is, what happens if we vote no?
If this town meeting votes no and this prohibition is defeated, obviously depending on what happens in Article Nine, Article Ten, the next article, all such uses would be allowed within Mashpee, unless they're otherwise prohibited by bylaw.
Who would decide which use would be permitted? Would it be the Board of Selectmen? Would it be town meeting?
The state will have to license all proposed establishments within the town. The town has a right to adopt bylaws down the road, should it choose to do so, to refine or limit certain types of establishment, again, if it so chooses to do.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Virginia Scharfenberg, 3 Pequot Avenue, here in Mashpee. I have a question of the Finance Committee. You're very much in, you don't want to do what the selectmen want to do, and what it appears most of this audience wants to do. I'm interested in your rationale. I know that you want the funds for the town, but how did you address some of these other questions in reaching your conclusion?
Mr. Chairman.
I think that, I mean, if in fact this was voted down and the town was allowed to have recreational marijuana, that begins the process of putting in place governance so that it's managed well. The article that follows this will guarantee, to some degree, past that there is just one location. And I think that we would look to, as a resident of the town, not just the Finance Committee, we would look to the Board of Selectmen and our leaders to make sure that if in fact the town does go in a direction of allowing recreational marijuana, that a lot of governance is put in place to manage it. I mean, we have to have, we have to have some faith in our leaders, and we have to have some faith in those that manage the town. Our job here is to look at what's happening in front of us, what's coming down the pike, so to speak. And we felt this was an opportunity for the town to generate some revenue, manage it well, so that moving forward, the town continues to be somewhat progressive. Not in trouble, but progressive.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
I agree with you.
Mr. Golly.
I just want to make clear to people that if this ban fails, the Board of Selectmen is not the licensing authority. We are not issuing the licenses. It's controlled by the state, by state rules and regulations. So don't, you know, don't vote with the misimpression that there's a local control issue here. The local control issue is on whether to ban it or not ban it, and where it can be located through zoning. Other than that, we don't have any control over the licensing process.
Yes, sir.
Dale Beersstaker, 15 Seespray. Just want to share a few observations that I've seen and read the last few days concerning marijuana. Marijuana is being researched in 37 states in this country. And it is also watching, CNBC this afternoon is becoming a big market. These players are getting on the stock exchanges, they're starting to sell shares. The growth is, it's coming. And I think by us voting no, we're going to pass out on the, miss the opportunity to generate some of this revenue. Some of these local towns that have- Some of these local towns that have, that have already, some, some of the towns that have approved this already are doing these side agreements, uh, that the state is kind of saying they're really not legal, and they're getting even more money than these, uh, state, uh, current law allows. So this is a big revenue opportunity for the town. I've been reading that we got a $250 million liability coming for sewage systems, uh, over the next thirty years. A hundred and sixty million if the oysters work, that's a big nut. That's a double, tripling people's property taxes. And we have an opportunity here with the taxes on marijuana, especially with the surrounding communities not going for it, um, that we could have a big audience for that here in this town, and it could generate a lot of money.
All right, I'm gonna, this is the last one, and then I'm gonna move the question. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Gino Montesi, I reside at 36 Park Place Way in Mashpee. And I just have a couple of questions. I'd like to direct them to the Chief of Police, is he present?
Uh, I did see him. And here he comes.
Oh, thank you. I can understand there are people on both sides of this issue, and I fully understand the monetary amount at which this can help fund a lot of things, especially when all the other Cape towns have basically decided they didn't want it. My question for the Chief of Police...
Standing behind you.
Well, thank you. My question, sir, is that, do you have a test to determine, like we do for alcohol, for your sobriety test that determine a blood level alcohol of 1.0 or higher, do we have one to determine driving impaired by marijuana?
Uh, no, sir, we do not.
Is there any guarantee that we have as a public, that you can guarantee the public safety if we allow recreational marijuana shops in the town of Mashpee?
Yeah, no, sir, I would not be able to do that.
So you cannot guarantee the public safety. So I think this is something that we ought to consider. And I think that money is money, and I'm all in favor of the town making money, lowering tax rates, but at what expense? Will the true expense be paid on the highways, on the roadways, in carnage? If we have no way to determine who is under the influence or who isn't, can the police chief honestly say that he can determine if any of his officers that showed up for duty are not under the influence of marijuana? I'm asking the question.
All right.
Is there any way that we can determine if an airline pilot?
Okay.
Or anybody else?
You made your point, sir.
So those are my questions, you have to consider them.
Okay. All right, we're gonna move to question.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Can I make one more comment?
Mr. Cotton, you can make one more comment.
Uh, I just, you know, listening to all this, um, I just didn't hear one thing. Is there impact on children? Is there? So think long and hard, I understand, you know, there's seniors, there's a lot of seniors here, and they're talking about, you know, the wealth, the health of seniors and for pain, and I, I'm very sympathetic to that. But just, please understand, when you vote, it, you know, those, that's a select few, we do have medical marijuana. The, the resources are there, they can go elsewhere, they can go down Cape and get it in recreational side. But think about the children.
This is a majority vote.
A yes is to prohibit.
I don't think there is, is there an age restriction?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Twenty-one to answer that question. Okay, all right.
Prohibits.
Ready to vote?
Yes, prohibits.
Yes, clarify.
Mr. Moderator.
Sorry?
Yes, prohibits.
Just to clarify, a yes vote prohibits having a facility in the town of Mashpee.
Okay? All right. All those in favor of Article Nine as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm gonna take a hand count, how about that? All right, raise your cards for those who are in favor of Article Nine as moved. This is in favor of Article Nine. Keep them up until the counters are done, please. Majority vote.
It failed.
I mean, you gotta get, uh, two fifty, two, five.
Is that just the three? I think there's one more.
Debbie, just three counters? Just three counters.
Those in the back got counted.
I'm sorry?
They got counted. But they're sitting down, so we don't miss them in the future.
Okay. All right, all those opposed Article Nine, raise your cards.
Oh, why do you have to count that too?
Oh yeah?
It failed.
I think it's close as well.
Somebody changes their mind, they gotta be able to count.
We've been to confirm, she never gave you a vote. They missed the first one.
They do.
This is surprising, actually. Ask her.
I did.
I did.
I haven't, I can't, I can't last.
I, I, you know, I don't have...
I went to the drug rehab high school. Make it even spoke. I deserve to have one gateway.
I need one more.
They style of marijuana, and then ate it.
Did she give you the first one?
Sure.
Just now.
That's in Tokyo, it's amazing. I can't, I can't do that anyways. That's gone for the rest of my life. I think we have some time to talk, right?
I think so.
You're gonna be in the paper, right? These are the paper, going against his board. That's good.
Police chief becomes capitalist.
That's right.
That's it. Town manager voting is against the board.
Former police chief, town manager votes against his board. I like that.
It's a coup.
But can you catch a fish?
I told you guys, I want the money.
You were cleaning all the time.
I haven't changed my position, nor have you.
He could have called it, she couldn't.
Done.
I'm not gonna tell you. All right, Article Nine is defeated, 309 to 258. Article Ten. See if the town will vote to adopt the following zoning bylaw amendment, limiting the number of marijuana retailers in town to fewer than twenty percent of the licenses issued within the town for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises under M- Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 15. And restricting locations of marijuana establishments to the commercial C1, C2, C3, or industrial I1 districts as a special permit use, or take any other action related there to. Uh, Mr. Arer.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article Ten as printed in the warrant, with the exception that, for bylaw codification purposes, all references to Section 174 dash forty-five point six, appearing therein, be changed to read Section 174 twenty-four point K. That subsection A, B, and C of the proposed bylaw be recodified as 1, 2, and 3. And further, that, that the existing Section 174 dash twenty-four dot K be recodified as Section 174 dash twenty-four dot L.
Second.
Motion made in second, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval of a byvote of five to zero.
Okay, it's a zoning bylaw, so let's go to the planning board.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, this is Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board. On September 27th, 2018, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article, which was continued to October 3rd. Um, on October 3rd, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Okay. Discussions on Article Ten. Yes, sir.
Hi, Dan Cupferman, 53 Tracy Lane. I'm curious as to how they, or you, or they came out with this twenty percent number. It seems pretty arbitrary to me, I don't understand the relationship between twenty percent of the establishments and this new law.
It's, it's by statute, it's the law. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my question is, oh, Mary Ellen Kirkendall, 431 Cotuit Road.
Thank you.
My question, and my, first a comment, if you do not want to compare pot to liquor sales and use, don't codify it as a percentage of the liquor stores in town. And my question is, should one of the liquor stores in town close, or more than one, or do you also close the pot shop?
Now, good idea though. Yes, sir.
Can you clarify the issue of the calculation of the twenty percent? Somebody said that was the law.
It's by statute.
Which Massachusetts statute?
Yes.
It's twenty, twenty percent of the existing liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses, and presently we have nine.
Yep. I, I can't figure out where the nine are, but I'll find out.
It's a little general package stores. Uh, other questions on Article Ten, or discussion?
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Let's move to vote.
Uh, I just want to make it clear so people understand that if you defeat this article, which needs a two-thirds vote, uh, since you defeated the ban on marijuana sales, it will be a free-for-all, there could be as many as they wanted to be, uh, under the statute. Now, I believe I'm correct, town council?
That's correct.
Yes. So it behooves you, uh, to approve this article so it, you don't get fifty medical or marijuana stores.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Ten as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, 'cause I need, it's a zoning law, so I need a two-thirds vote, so I'm gonna have to call for a vote. Because it's two-thirds. So all those in favor of Article Ten, raise your cards.
One man, one vote, one card.
I got it somewhere. You might have took one.
What's wrong with you?
Did you register? Was I supposed to? Pretty easy to forget though. That's mine, right there. Yours is under, under blue. There is somewhere. You're saying blue, but the car is not for a lot of law. And they think of blue. Who's wrong about the car? Not them.
They want one at every corner.
Yeah, that's...
That's all crowded, there's like...
Yeah, it's good, really good.
It's a high watermark for the evening, Phil.
That was my biggest nightmare, maybe one or two, I don't know, I don't care.
I believe so.
You've been red.
You've been red, I don't think. This, this girl, the rest is terrible.
Does the town manager want to vote again?
I don't think so.
Drink sorority tonight. Hey, you had drink sorority tonight?
The town changes things. But we, now we're just talking about money, you know, waste water.
Carol, Carol. Drinks are on the town manager tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope that real cattle opens.
Uh-huh.
I hope that, I hope that cattle opens, and now we get it.
There you go.
Wish I did, you know?
Okay. All right.
I was like, do you have these on your hands?
I don't have these.
I know.
All right, all those opposed, raise your cards.
None of you are there, right? Okay. We're all... We're headed again, everything. So this is a way to start the vote?
It's an option, it's an option. Too bad you're out of the business of marijuana.
I tell you, if this doesn't pass, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be really upset.
Then we got a problem.
Because we got, we got a serious problem, you okay, Carol?
I think we have it. I do too.
Huh? I think so too.
All I know is the people that said that.
It's a big group.
Never do, I actually showed up.
Oh, really, it's a big group, or really, they got like a, a good group.
Okay. Uh, it is approved, 421 to 106. Article 11. See if the town will vote to adopt the following Section 174 dash 57. To the zoning bylaws, in addition to the enforcement provisions of Section 174 dash 102 to 105, to read as follows. Signs, 174 dash 57 dash one violations and penalties, the building inspector or his or her designee...
Sir on Rodney tonight? Well, this is. Hey, you had drink, sir on Rodney tonight? The town changes things. But we, now we're just talking about money, no wastewater. Carol, Carol. Drink, sir on the town manager tonight.
All right, all those opposed, raise your cards.
I tell you, if this doesn't pass, I'm going to, I'm going to be really upset. Then we got a problem. Because we got, we got a serious problem, you okay, Cora? I think so, too.
Okay. Uh, it is approved, four hundred and twenty-one to one oh six. Article eleven. See if the town will vote to adopt the following Section one seventy-four dash fifty-seven. To the zoning bylaws, in addition to the enforcement provisions of Section one seventy-four dash one oh two to one oh five, to read as follows. Signs, one seventy-four dash fifty-seven dash one violations and penalties, the building inspector or his or her designee shall enforce this article and may issue such fine as set forth below for violations of the within zoning bylaw regarding signs. Such violations shall be subject to non-criminal disposition in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter forty, Section twenty-one D. First offense is a warning, second offense is fifty dollars per sign, and third and subsequent offenses a hundred dollars per sign, or take any other action related there to. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to adopt Section one seventy-four dash fifty-seven violation and penalties of the zoning bylaws in addition to the existing enforcement provisions of Section one seventy-four dash one oh two to one oh five, as set forth in Article eleven of the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action related there to."
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Wigan, Chair of Planning Board. On September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, the Planning Board held a meeting on this article. The public hearing continued to October third. On October third, two thousand eighteen, the Planning voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article.
Okay. Yes, sir.
A couple of questions, Abraham Brody here again. Uh, those signs, can they be in the easement, or are they technically on the taxed property?
Ms. Sherman.
They can be anywhere. We have a sign by law that you come before the board and get approval for a sign that you want to put out on, on town property or anywhere. Now we can control other towns from bringing signs into our town.
What if it's a freedom of speech issue?
That's addressed in the bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on Article eleven?
Well, wait a second, are you saying that a political, if I put up a sign?
No, no, no political.
You said any sign, if I put up a sign for a political candidate on my property, is it against this law?
Name and address.
Larry Heck, two forty, Who-Pole Road.
Okay.
Political signs and real estate signs do not abide.
Okay, then whoever said any sign, Mr. Vote, is that right?
This is other signs.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article eleven, I need a two-thirds vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I de, I declare it a two-thirds vote.
Thank you so much.
All right, Article twelve, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading. Motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All right, we have, who is it? Hold on. Mr. Cahalan.
Excuse me for that. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article twelve as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating there to."
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of three to zero.
Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Wigan, Chair of Planning Board. On September twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article. The public hearing continued to October third. Um, on October third, two thousand eighteen, the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of this article, provided the following uses were struck. Cafe slash food service and outdoor seating area from Section D accessory uses as this needs, as this, um, needs a modification in order to comply with other parts of the zoning bylaw.
Okay. Mr. Fadala.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion to that Article twelve be amended to delete the phrases, quote, cafe, food service, parentheses includes restaurants that are not full service, unquote, and quote, outdoor seating slash eating area from Section D accessory uses. And I can provide an explanation if you want, but, um, that is consistent with what the Planning Board recommended.
Okay, it's consistent, any further explanation?
The re, the reason, and this was discussed at the Planning Board meeting, it was discussed with the town planner, Evan Laird, is that these two uses, as listed in this article, conflict with other sections of the zoning bylaw in the table, Table of Uses that already deal with restaurants and outdoor seating. Uh, so that, uh, it creates two conflicting sections in the zoning bylaw, so that's not a good thing. Uh, this is something that, um, in talking to Evan, we can bring back in the future to work it out so that it's done properly and it doesn't create that conflict. But, um, right now it would create a problem in the zoning bylaw because of that con, conflict with the existing sections of the, of the table of uses. So, um, other than that, great for the article.
I need a second to the, motion made in second. Any further discussion on the motion to amend, to bring it into conformity with the rest of the zoning bylaw?
I oppose the amendment.
Okay.
We put, I'm chairman of the economic development, and we put this article forth to the selectmen because we have businesses coming into town that want to manufacture, retail, wholesale, and be able to serve their product on the premises. And they want to come into the industrial area. We want to have it so that there's no more, well, not no more, but to clean it up a little bit and bring new business in. And this was our way to bring it forth. So I oppose that amendment because the businesses would like to serve outside and sell retail and wholesale and manufacture their product.
Well, again, the, the, I love to eat. Everybody knows I love to eat, I'm all in favor of restaurants. It's just that there are other sections of the zoning bylaw that prohibit restaurants right now and outdoor dining in industrial areas. That's something that in the spring, working with Evan, or whoever, we come back and we'll fix it so that it doesn't create this conflict I'm talking about. It's not that we're against that, it's just that it creates a problem within the zoning bylaw where you got two sections saying two different things.
Any other discussion on the amendment?
Is this a legal conflict?
Seeing none, you're voting to.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is proposing to create an overlay district, and I, I believe that the overlay district has appropriate designations to the use table set forth in the bylaw itself. I'm not aware of any direct conflict that would render this inconsistent or unenforceable as, as proposed.
Mr. Fadala.
The, uh, restaurants are prohibited under Section one seventy-four twenty-five, I think it's, uh, H, I had it written down, but I forgot it.
No, I think.
It's one seventy-four twenty-four, uh, twenty-five I-ten is, uh, that prohibits outdoor dining in the industrial zone and, uh, one seventy-four twenty-five E-two prohibits outdoor dining, or restaurants in the industrial zone.
Mr. Moderator.
Um, so you're going to have, and this is something outside of the Table of Uses. It's a separate section of the zoning bylaw, so I'm seeing a conflict there between looking at the Table of Uses that says no restaurants and this thing that says restaurants.
And Mr. Gottlieb.
I just think in a matter like this where the Town Council has advised us that there is not a conflict and that it can be addressed under the structure of the bylaw and where we have an interest in trying to, uh, be a welcoming community to a diversity of, of commercial enterprises and act, quite frankly, have some new properties, uh, in the industrial area that are more than just warehouse structures, which is typically what, uh, we see in a lot of our industrial areas, which contribute less than would be desired to our tax base, that we send a signal to those businesses that we're open for that type of higher-end development in areas that have been designated as appropriate for, uh, for those purposes. And to the extent that there, it's determined to be a problem that the parties involved can't work around, then we come back in the spring and fix it. But to say that defer it now, we'll fix it in the spring, um, sends a signal to the people that are looking to site in those areas now to look elsewhere. So I think that we can manage this, and I would defer to Town Council's view.
All right, last comment, if you want to make a.
Uh, just to, you know, I was your town planner for thirty-four years, I'm pretty sure I know the zoning bylaw, and, uh, I think there's a problem. If you want to get into the mess that you're going to get into, fine, but, uh, this is not against restaurants, it's absolutely, I love them. I think it's a good idea, it's just I don't think it's the right way to go about it, and, uh, it really should be cleaned up. And adopt this whole section, but without those two uses and come back later with the uses. And there's other things that were originally included in this light overlay district. There were design guidelines that also, uh, should come back that Evan worked on and were a good idea. So, I mean, there'll be things coming back to improve this bylaw, actually. Um, the next time around where there's a zoning thing, but right now I, I don't see why you have to create this conflict, even if it's temporary.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Krielisch.
I'm not, I'm not speaking directly about the amendment so much as the whole article, which I think Mr. Fadala just spoke about. And that is simply that I've, I've been in town government since I got here in the seventies. I've no, I was a recording secretary to the Planning Board for many years, and I was on the Finance Committee for many years. This, this doesn't, this isn't even a good piece of legislation. I, I'm shocked by it. You can go through it and highlight every place they use a phrase like this, light industrial. Uh, production, I would ask Town Council about whether or not this could even, this would be adjudicated right away if, if you were coming before the town. Light industrial, production of smaller consumer goods generally, generally sold directly to the end user, not as products designed as medi, intermediaries for use by other industries, often in the form of food and beverage. Handicrafts, I mean. Grillage? That's just legally a mess, and it goes on. We've got under art, handicraft and apparel, we have the words and similar items using hand tools. We have, under furniture, we have the phrase such as sofas. You know, under the, under the furniture making, the manufacture of movable objects designed to support human activity. I, of course, immediately thought of a walker and a wheelchair, but it's not listed here. So, but you did list sofas and stools and tables. I mean, this thing is a complete mess. You won't find any other section of the zoning bylaws, the general bylaws, Mass General Laws, that has as many ambiguous phrases in it as this does. So I agree that this is a mess and it doesn't pass the smell test. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to call on the, um, town planner to give us an explanation as to why he drafted this and what he's trying to accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting. I want to just directly address the previous speaker's, um, assertions that the definitions included in the bylaw are erroneous or otherwise unwarranted or, um, don't belong in the zoning bylaw. These definitions were, um, used or taken from existing bylaws passed by other town meetings. Um, and I wanted to just go back to the intent of the overlay in general. Industry has changed in the United States, it's changed, um, in small towns throughout America. Industrial uses are not what they once were. We don't see a lot of heavy manufacturing. We see now a lot of lighter production that aren't, that are manufacturing of non-capital intensive goods that don't require a lot of square footage, um, that don't require capital intensive pieces of equipment. Uh, and zoning bylaws take a lot of intervention to, um, alter. They need a two-thirds vote at town meeting, uh, and they often don't keep up with modern economy. So the listed uses, light industrial being one, it was modeled after definitions that, um, I use, uh, from case studies. Um, and this is just to simply provide guidance to a permitting authority for a business that isn't directly listed in the use table. Uh, the other uses you see are, uh, definitions taken from, um, food manufacturing, furniture making, for example. I heard, uh, the, a discussion about wheelchairs and, and the like, but the intent was to provide opportunity for an artisan who's creating, uh, one-of-a-kind products to be sold directly to a consumer. And that is the definition as listed, uh, as light industrial. Uh, in our industrial districts, we see, uh, very homogeneous, um, mix of uses that being, and they are great neighbors, but contractor, excuse me, contractor bays, landscaping, um, storage and warehousing. Uh, these are productive uses, but we aren't seeing a great, um, hybrid of mixes and uses that create, uh, broader advantages to our community and community development opportunities. So if we want to boost and elevate these areas, um, adding these more modern industrial uses might create those opportunities for folks who are, um, makers and, uh, working out of their homes and want to scale up to a brick and mortar location. Um, this is just simply to provide an incentivized opportunity for those individuals and those business owners that we have in our community. Um, so I would refute, uh, the notion that the definition section in here, as listed in the warrant article, or the article as written, is unnecessary or unprecedented or otherwise. Um, it is guidance necessary for any permitting authority to make an informed decision about the bylaw as written. Thank you.
Okay. Move the question. You're, you're voting on the amendment first, whether to amend this article. So those in favor of amending this article, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, it's defeated. Now you're going to vote, or I'll take discussion on the article itself, any discussion on the article itself, as currently written. Seeing none, I need a two-thirds vote on this article. All those in favor of the article as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes, two-thirds. Article thirteen. Take a motion to, uh, dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Gottlieb.
You had any doubt of his mind?
Mr. Moderator. I move the town auth, vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court for a special act as set forth below, authorizing the establishment of a sewer construction and water quality maintenance and improvement fund to receive revenue under Section three A of Chapter sixty-four G of the General Laws for planning, designing, and construction of sewers and other means of comprehensive wastewater management and maintenance and improvement of water resources, provided that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the act unless the Board of Selectmen approves amendments to the act before enactment by the General Court, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to approve amendments to the act, which shall be within the scope of the general objectives of the petition. An act relative to the sewer construction and water quality and improvement fund in the town of Mashpee. Section one being enacted by the House Senate and House of Representatives and the General Court assembled, and by authority the same as follows, notwithstanding Section fifty-three of Chapter forty-four of the General Laws or any other general law or special law to the contrary, the town of Mashpee may establish the Sewer Construction and Water Quality Maintenance Improvement Fund to receive revenue under Section three A of Chapter sixty-four G of the General Laws in the manner set forth in Section two, and may appropriate monies in the fund for planning, designing, and construction of sewers and other means of comprehensive wastewater management and maintenance and improvement of water resources. Section two of this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of three to two.
I don't think the Planning Board decided so. Yes, ma'am. Can you not, the Planning Board vote on this?
No.
Okay.
Um, Mary Wigan, thirty-five, Ashumet Road, Mashpee. Did this article get amended from what's printed in the warrant?
No.
No.
Okay. Any discussion on Article thirteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, majority vote. Article fourteen. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section one seventy-four dash five. Establishment of zoning map as follows. In subsection A, replace the fa, phrase Otis Air National Guard Base Action Prevention Zone with the phrase Wireless Facility Overlay District, and delete the phrase Groundwater Protection, Protective Districts. At the beginning of subsection C-two, add the phrase that parcel land shown on the two thousand seventeen Mashpee Assessors Map as map one oh four block two, and/or take any other action related there to. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I motion to indefinitely postpone Article 14.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone. Finance Committee does not want to weigh in on that. Discussions on the motion to indefinitely postpone? Seeing none.
Uh, excuse me. Sure. I'll be happy to address.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Upon further review of this proposed article early today in discussion with town offices, it was determined to indefinitely postpone this article because it wasn't presently necessary to proceed with these amendments. And we're willing to rely upon the existing zoning bylaws moving forward in this regard until further action can be taken at a future town meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I just want to take this...
Name and address, please.
Laura Howard, I'm on Minigraev. And I want to take this opportunity in speaking about wireless and cell phone towers for everyone to really get to understand 5G technology, which I'm sure we'll be meeting here soon to talk about that discussion. It's a very dangerous technology with many, many health issues to follow.
Yes, sir.
As any person who has taken some college physics will tell you, the wireless technology is more dangerous from your Wi-Fi router than anything coming off the cell phone tower. It's one over R squared. You can look it up on the internet.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Terry Ronhock, 104 DeGrasse Road. So I have a question. If this article gets indefinitely postponed, does that mean the cell tower proposal is moving forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, but they're not looking for a zoning bylaw change?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Shane Corey, 11 Michelle Lane. If proximity to cell towers increases risk of cancer rates, and looking around me, I can see the general voting populace here is in basically the grave...there's a grave reality of cancer for most of you looking at your ages, so I think you should think about that.
What did he say?
You're all old people having cancer.
Oh.
Okay. Now I can smoke weed.
I'm not going to argue that point. I have another question.
Oh, good. Because I'm speechless.
My question here is, with what's written here in the book, the blue book that we were handed, it said replacing the groundwater protection district with the wireless district. So my question is here, by putting a cell phone tower in here, are we automatically removing the wellhead protection district?
No.
No.
Okay, good. I want to make sure about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. My advanced age could tell that.
Hello? I'm going to have to move this up a little bit. It's not really made for tall people. So my name is Brian Baumgartl, 119 DeGrasse Road. I've also had the great pleasure of serving on your Board of Health for the last year and a half. It's kind of an interesting tactic to sort of delay this. Had really foreseen this, I apologize. I apologize. Is that better? Everybody hear me now?
Yep.
So what I wrote really, some of this doesn't really apply, but generally speaking, I think the notion here is that this is sort of a contest between the haves and have-nots. Obviously, you know, New Seaberry has needed a cell phone antenna for a long time, and they've rejected some proposals to actually put them in their own backyard. So why not let...put it in somebody else's backyard? I don't generally disagree with the idea of public safety. You know, obviously, having cell phone service along our waterfront, given light of the whole shark attack situation going on, is undeniably paramount. So it is 2018. We should have cell phone service out on the beach. I mean, I know a lot of people like to use Facebook while they're sitting there chilling out with their sunscreen and their kids. But really, while this project looks to preserve the character of New Seaberry as proposed, it still leaves large swaths of Popanesset and the Nantucket Sound waterfront without cell phone service. Meanwhile, there's adequate land available within the borders of New Seaberry that would accommodate a project which will provide full coverage to the area. And for the record, our cell phone service is fine. I get four bars in my town. It's clear to me that the true purpose of this article is not to provide for those who face some sort of disadvantage, but is intended instead to force the common folk of Mashpee to pay into one of New Seaberry's exclusive memberships that we all heard about in the news. Given the lack of transparency involved with this project and the extremely favorable Cape Cod Commission report, I believe unfortunately that this project is a fait accompli regardless of how we vote on this particular article as it is written, and clearly that is the case. This article has been proposed via the Selectmen by the former town planner because, in his words, "this parcel is not within the wireless overlay district." Our current town planner believes the parcel is within the district despite the complicated algorithm necessary to determine such things. The Cape Cod Commission report recommends this bylaw change to remove ambiguity regarding the status of this parcel with respect to the wireless overlay district. The lease has already been signed and the ink has long since dried on this particular parcel. Our Selectmen's hands appear to be tied on this issue, however ours are not. I would like to propose a solution which clears up the ambiguity in the zoning bylaw and provides for the equal protection that we all expect from our government. Mr. Moderator, I would like to make a motion to amend Article 14 of the October 2018 Mashpee Annual Town Meeting Warrant by inserting the word "accepting" and removing the word "and" from paragraph 3 to read as follows.
Well, wait, let me stop you because there's a motion to indefinitely postpone. So if that gets defeated, you can do exactly what you're asking. So you can't do it now.
Okay, I'll wait.
All right. Well, you got to step aside because there's some people behind you. Yes, sir.
Bruce Lehman. I'm afraid to give my address. 139 Walton Heath. I was confused before you got up. Now I'm completely confused. I just have one question. If you want the cell tower, what do you vote?
Well, right now, it's being asked to be indefinitely postponed. So that doesn't mean that the cell tower won't go up, is what I'm being told.
So there's a motion on the floor now to indefinitely postpone this warrant.
This article.
This article. And this article is intended to do what?
Well, to zoning bylaw.
Can I take a shot at it? The town council has advised us that the existing zoning accommodates the proposed installation of the cell phone tower, making this amendment unnecessary. So we're recommending that this article be tabled through indefinite postponement. So it would leave the existing zoning as it is now in place if it's indefinitely postponed.
So that would mean, that would mean it would be up to the powers that be whether a cell tower goes up or not, under the current zoning. So why are we voting? Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little shorter than this very articulate gentleman who basically stole everything I wanted to say. Jen McDonald, 103 DeGrasse Road. Some of you have been wondering who I am, I heard at the last planning board meeting. He articulated everything I was feeling and then some. I first am sad that this has pitted neighborhoods against neighborhoods. There are not...there are other neighborhoods in Mashpee that don't have adequate cell coverage that aren't really being represented. I feel bad for the people in the areas of New Seaberry and Popanesset that don't have adequate coverage. My son worked there for four years. I worked there this summer. I get it, we all get it. I do, however, feel that there's been some, very, very much a big lack of transparency. I feel this right now is an example of the shady politics that many of us are really, really upset with. And when our town planning board votes unanimously not to support something, that ought to tell you something. We, the people of Mashpee, would like to have some say in this. The folks in our neighborhood have been vocal, but maybe not vocal enough. But I really strongly feel that we should have some say in this matter. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Claudia. I'm on 45 Winter Green. Can you hear me?
Yeah, a little louder, that's all. Closer, that's all.
So my comment and question kind of piggybacks?
Just go right up to it.
All right. Is piggybacks on...oh, there we go. What she was just saying, which is you guys have decided to postpone...what was her word? Postpone the decision or whatever. Can we vote to say no, we don't want to postpone this?
You can.
Can we do that right here, today?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Will we get that chance?
You will.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I get the big dollars.
My name is Linda Lubelsik. I live at 56 Tracy Lane. I went to the planning board meeting and I listened to both sides of this. And Mr. Fadala pointed out very clearly that this is not in that district. And that is why the town...at that time, I got up and said, oh, does that mean the town made a big oops? They leased the property to Verizon. It is residential property. They leased it to Verizon for commercial purposes. And then went oops because they didn't...it was not in that overlay district. Now they're trying to...I don't know what you're trying to pull right now in telling you that it is in the overlay district. I would like to ask the people of Mashpee to please vote against indefinitely postponing and please vote against this article.
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator, you got to peel this up.
Mr. Collins?
I'd like to just point out that this isn't merely about cell phone reception in New Seaberry. It's also about reception for our first responders, for our police and our firefighters. It's about them being able to, it's about them being able to call for help, call for assistance, and communicate to dispatch in a time of need. There are dead spots in New Seaberry, and they need to be able to transmit on the radio and get the necessary assistance. It's been a longtime problem. And one of the reasons, one of the reasons why this specific location was designated as a possible site is because it is publicly owned. And if we're going to put a repeater system up for our police and our fire departments, we want to do it on public property.
Yes, sir.
Dennis Balsarini, 176 Whipperwell Circle, and a member of the Mashpee Planning Board. As anybody knows, after watching the planning board, I speak my mind, and this don't smell right to me. Like I said before at the planning board meeting, put it up in New Seaberry. They got two golf courses that it wouldn't bother anybody. They can put it up in the golf course. That's where they need it, that'll take care of our safety response. That's where it should go. I don't plan to put people on the grass road in that area. This is getting pushed down their throat. And I don't like the way this, this went about just now. It don't smell good to me. That's all I can say.
Going to get some new voices. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Alyssa Sarman, Red Brook Road. So I'm gonna...I have a few points that I want to bring up, but I'm sorry, I'm still confused of the question. So we are having the opportunity to vote on this?
So you can...
Or at a later date?
No. You can...right now, the motion on the floor is to indefinitely postpone this article. You can vote to not indefinitely postpone.
Okay. So then I think it's worth my while to express my concerns about what a yes or no vote would mean. So I do have one side question. The area where it's proposed right now, does anyone know, is that part of conservation land?
The answer's no.
No, you don't know, or no, it is not?
No, it's not part of conservation.
Okay, thank you. So the, you know, so the one concern came up about...can everyone...you can hear me. The one concern came up about the health risks. I have a toddler and a 12-year-old of my own. And the research is certainly scattered, so if you look everywhere, you might find different information. On the American Cancer Society site, I just want to say what they write here. Research compared a group of more than 2,600 children with cancer to a group of similar children without cancer. They found that those who lived in a town that could have exposed them to higher-than-average RF radiation from cellular phone towers in the previous five years had a slightly higher risk of cancer. Now, slightly isn't a ton, but I'm not willing to take that risk from my children, and I hope that everyone is not willing to do the same. And if it doesn't go...thanks. And if it doesn't go down the street from me, if we say yes to this article, it could be in your backyard. It could be in your backyard. It could be anywhere. And it shouldn't be in a residential zone. We should care more about our children than that. Another point that I want to bring up is that, and years ago, I used to be a real estate agent. So I want to refer to the National Association of Realtors website, where it says that research shows over 90% of buyers are not willing to buy a home near a cell phone tower. My home is my asset. It's my investment. And I can't believe that so many people are willing to just allow that to be the case. I mean, that's...your home is your biggest asset. So that point is something that's certainly...so if you're disregarding the health point, remember the value in your home. And then that brings up now, and I should say...
One more point, come on.
I also have a home in New Seaberry, so my home in New Seaberry would be affected beneficially, right? But I don't think it should be in any residence. I don't think it should be anywhere. That's my proposal, and thank you.
Mr. Moderator, move the question.
Yes, sir. Town Planner.
Evan Larra, Town Planner. I just want to provide some procedural notes as people consider how to vote on this amendment and the article if the amendment...or, excuse me, the proposal to indefinitely postpone is shot down. Procedurally, this is...this discussion now is not about a project as proposed before the Cape Cod Commission. That project will be referred back to the planning board, and the planning board will be the permitting authority on that project. This discussion is specific to an amendment to the zoning bylaw, not the proposal that is currently at the Cape Cod Commission to be, in the future, referred back to your permitting authority, who has the ultimate discretion to approve or not approve this project.
All right, we're going to wrap it up. We got three people who want to talk about indefinitely postponing or not. I'll take those.
Mike Ronhock, 104 DeGrasse. I have a question for that. If this gets indefinitely postponed, goes to town, to the planning board, and gets defeated, which it should be, can you bring this back?
No.
No.
A version of it? To try to get it reapproved?
Town Council.
If no action is taken on this, if this is indefinitely postponed, it will be off the table.
You cannot come back and try to rezone that property for that use.
It can be rezoned, sure. At a future town meeting, an article to rezone that, not so much this property, but the provisions of the existing bylaw can be amended in the future.
So you could come back, and if it gets defeated, you could re...
Correct.
Revive this and come back for another round of talks about it. Okay. The other thing I'd like to just address is Mr. Collins on his first responders. I don't think there's anybody in this room that would dispute first responders, police of fire have to have communications, but a repeater system that's proposed does not require 150-foot monster to operate on that. That repeater system will be nowhere near that height. It doesn't require that, and it wouldn't need that. If the town wants or needs a repeater... If, if the town wants, or needs a repeater system for their fire or police station, come to us and say, let's put up a small tower or whatever it requires to do this. But not lease a gigantic tower to multi-billion-dollar corporations to make money and overshadow all, everybody's homes. Uh, there, there is a system in place that can be put into New Seaberry that will work much better. This system here, uh, will have multiple dead zones. Unfortunately, people in Pompanas, if you look at the, um, coverage maps for this type of system, uh, you're not going to have any change. Uh, it's a huge, huge area. Uh, the small cell system that was proposed originally to, um, the Peninsula Council would address all those issues. Not only that, um, it's a, it's a, um, multiple antenna system which would triangulate for police and fire much better than a single, um, macro tower. So, on those, those points, uh, it sounds like a great thing, but it's not needed, 150-foot tower to do what we need to do for the fire department, uh, and the police department. That could be done very easily. Also, also could be done as a municipal project. It wouldn't, we wouldn't have to lease land to a corporation.
John Vail in Dover Road. I am also a member of the fire department. I'd like to say, just to address the health concerns that the young lady posed earlier. Across the nation, a lot of fire departments are having these towers put near the fire stations, so there was a lot of concern about that. Multiple studies have been done, been done by the International Association of Firefighters, as well as the International Association of Fire Chiefs, to ensure the safety of their firefighters. And there is no issue or health concerns based on those studies. Second of all, I've lived in this town for 28 years, last 26 are the two largest towers in town, which are 76.2 meters high, which is 250 feet. And I've lived in, they're in my backyard. My house has quadrupled in value since I've been here. So I don't know what you're talking about, or what studies you're coming up with regards to the, your home costs are going to go down. As far as public safety, you're right, there is a repeater system that helps us address our radios. The problem is, when people try to call us, which everyone has, is cell service, they have no cell service. If you just look what happened this summer, on the beaches, people could not contact public safety. Yes, there are options for our radio repeaters, and they're costly, but there are options that don't require the tall 150-foot tower, which I don't think is mammoth, because I have 200, 250-foot towers. But it's a problem of the people with the cell service trying to get ahold of us, so that we can come help them, is a big concern, and that's why we need these towers.
All right, last one, and then I'm going to move the question.
Yeah, Frank Woodward, Lisa Lane. I hope that we don't postpone this article. To address the gentleman on the right, uh, concerns with regard to our friends and neighbors in New Seaberry, we certainly want them to get the help as soon as possible. But certainly, a solution to that would be to put the cell tower in New Seaberry. The article that we would postpone would give us the article that's on the, the menu. And that would give us an opportunity to let you know that we don't want a cell tower where you have it in this article. And that would be on that parcel of land that's, um, there, uh, at the present time. So hopefully, this article be postponed, won't be postponed. We'll take up the article that's on the warrant, and we'll defeat it. That at least will give you an indication, an idea-
Discussion opens again.
-that we don't want it. Thank you.
Good. All right, we're going to vote. You're voting on-
They're trying to kill it, right?
-the motion to indefinitely postpone. It's a majority vote. For those, all in favor of Article 14 being indefinitely postponed, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, it's defeated. Now, the article before us is here. Discussion on Article 14. Well, actually, I need a motion. I need a motion to approve Article 14.
I guess it's me?
Yeah.
No, you don't have to.
I have a motion.
The town votes to amend the zoning bylaw by amending section 174-5. Sorry about that. I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending section 174-5. Establishment of a zoning map as set forth in Article 14 of the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "Or take any other action relating thereto."
I have a second.
Second.
Motion made, and second, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends vote at town meeting by five to, five to zero vote.
Okay. Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board. On October 3rd, 2018, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article and voted unanimous, unanimously to not recommend approval.
Any discussion on Article 14?
Okay. Did, did you actually read the article? I think we started with a motion to indefinitely postpone the article, didn't we?
No, I read it because I-
Did it get read, it, it was read?
Yeah, I butchered the word phrase twice.
Okay, so the, so the, right, so then, but you indefinitely postponed, so doesn't somebody actually have to make the motion? You read the article? Doesn't someone have to put it-
We just did.
That was, he amended a motion that wasn't put on the floor yet, didn't he?
No, no, that's the original motion. Any discussion on Article 14? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Shannon Tribuco. I live at 108 DeGrasse Road. This tower is proposed to be directly behind my house. Um, I just have some, this is from the International Firefighters Association, saying that they oppose the use of stations for their base towers because of health concerns, and I know health concerns cannot be considered, that I understand. So, what, if they don't want it there, why should we have it in our backyard? I live in this house with my two small children.
It's all right, he's just walking, he's not going to, I'll protect you.
I, that's just, that's all I have. I live in this house with my two small children, and I'm concerned about having a tower in my backyard for more, more, many reasons. But this is from the Firefighters Association, saying that they don't want them on their stations either.
Got it.
John Vail in Dover Road. Unfortunately, the union president, who is representing the firefighters, doesn't live in town and couldn't be here. But he asked me to speak to you and tell you that they are not against this cell tower. There are no health concerns. They've got numerous studies done by the International Association of Firefighters, as well as the International Association of Fire Chiefs, to ensure the safety of the firefighters that are working beneath or near these towers. That's why they're not opposed to it at all.
Hey.
So what we're voting on is whether or not to make-
Name and address, please.
Mark Hayden, 32 Devonshire Drive. So you're, if we vote this down, you already have a contract signed with Verizon, can they still build it even though it's not, if it's voted down?
If permitted.
All right.
Yeah, it's got to be permitted first, and then approved.
Excuse me?
It's got to be permitted, and if it's approved, the permit's granted, then it can be built.
Who would permit it?
Planning Board.
The Planning Board. So, no matter what we vote, the Planning Board could still approve it?
Correct.
That's correct.
Correct. Mr. Moderator, can I take a stab at clarifying this?
Got it.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to take a stab at clarifying this. Article 14 was created because there was, it was questioned whether it was zoned correctly, according to Tom Fadala. Correct? All right, so I got, I got the nod from Tom. So, the reason why this, so again, this was created to modify the zoning, to allow the tower, okay? So, whether, right now, at this point, as the Chair of the Planning Board mentioned, it, this still does go back to the Planning Board, as far as the tower. Article 14, in favor or against, this is the reason why I, I, I recommended postponing it and withdrawing it, because it, it's not needed. So the, according to legal counsel, the zoning, we could, if it's approved through the, through the Cape Cod Commission and the Planning Board, we could install under present zoning laws, under that zoning right now.
And it's pending before the-
So, and it's pending right now in front of the commission. So, Article 14, yes or no, it has, it has nothing to do, it's still going in front of Cape Cod Commission and to the, back to the Planning Board. So this does nothing to do, Article 14, which is the reason why I, I recommended postponing it, is because it's not a yes tower or no tower. Is that, I'm hoping I'm clear, it's just, it's really, this article just changes the zoning and allows the tower.
And it wasn't wanted.
And it, but it was not needed, because the zoning is already clarified that it's, it's, there's no change needed.
Can I propose an amendment to prevent any wireless towers be placed on that parcel?
I'm sorry, what's your amendment, sir?
To prevent any wireless tower to be placed on said parcel.
Which parcel are we talking about?
I'm talking about the parcel that-
What do you mean? What parcel? What parcel are we talking about, for Christ's sake? Don't be obtuse. The specific parcel? Okay. Do you guys all live in New Seaberry and want the tower there?
No, actually, no.
The fight.
I would suggest that that article is out of order, because it, it would impose a more restrictive zoning scheme on the parcel than what is provided in the bylaw.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I would suggest that that motion would be out of order to amend, because it imposes a more restrictive zoning scheme than that which is provided in the bylaw.
Without what? It's out of order, so I won't take it. How many of you live in New Seaberry? That'd be a good question.
Move the question. Move the question. I make a motion, move the question.
Nobody wants to answer that?
No, I don't.
I do not live in New Seaberry.
I can see where this is going. Take, I'm going to take a vote to move the question. I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. So now, you're voting on Article 14. You're either going to approve it or deny it. Need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 14 as moves, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's defeated. See if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain a portion of a certain parcel of land identified on Mashpee Assessors Map 37 as Parcel 28 and located at 226 Catuit Road, consisting of 1,194 square feet, more or less, as shown on a plan entitled Catuit Road, Road Taking. Plan Map 37 and Lot 38 dated July 6, 2018, prepared by Baxter &amp; I Engineering and Surveying for Road Utility Purposes, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to raise an appropriate borrow, transfer from available funds, any sum that may be necessary for such purchase or taking, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any agreements, documents, or instruments necessary to effect said acquisition upon such terms and conditions as they deem to be in the best interest of the town in taking any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen-
You've got to get into it.
Thanks. I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain a portion of a certain parcel of land identified on Mashpee Assessors Map 37 as Parcel 28 and located at 226 Catuit Road, consisting of 1,194 square feet, more or less, as shown on the plan entitled Catuit Road, Road Taking. Plan Map 37 and Lot 38 dated July 6, 2018, prepared by Baxter &amp; I Engineering and Surveying for Road and Utility Purposes, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute any agreements, documents, or instruments necessary to effect said acquisition upon such terms and condition as they deem to be in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Motion made, and second, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee does not recommend town meeting approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Planning Board.
No.
No? I apologize, no Planning Board.
Right, because we, we did not vote on it.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on Article 15? Just repeat your name, please, that's all.
Virginia Holland.
Thank you.
So, my understanding is that this is a safety concern for the town, this intersection?
Yeah.
How many accidents in the last few years has there been at this location?
Um, can they-
I don't know off the top of my head.
Off the top of their head, they don't know, does the chief, chief of police know?
Because this is a three-way intersection, and one of these streets-
Hold on.
Okay.
Yes, no?
I thought you said you didn't know. Because I, I know I'm actually looking to purchase property just beyond this intersection, and from what I understand, this is a three-way, and one of the streets is a dead-end road.
No. No. Mr. Moderator.
Right here, 226 Catuit-
This, the director's here. Yeah.
130, is that where, hold on. Yeah, Route 130 and Catuit, where it intersects.
So we have the DPW director who can briefly address us. Where is she?
Good evening.
Good evening. Um, I'm not quite sure what the question is. This is the intersection of Catuit Road and Route 130. So this is, um, a property taking that we're proposing to realign that intersection.
Just going to change the intersection, and I'm sure you're going to make it safer.
Yes.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Donna Erdman, Leeward Lane. Why does the Finance Committee not approve?
Uh, Mr. Richardson, why didn't the Finance Committee approve? Uh, no? Mr. H.
The Finance Committee doesn't recommend approval, because we really don't know the scope of the project. We don't know how much the project is going to cost. We don't know about the taking of the land. It's not that we don't agree with realignment of the intersection. There's absolutely no details, um, telling us what the costs will be incurred.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Tagotli.
We, the Board of Selectmen had a in-detail briefing from traffic engineers on this particular location. As with all projects, we've got to go out to bid, see what it's going to cost, we can use state money to do it. So this just gives us the ability to have the authorization, if we decide to proceed with the safety improvement, to take the relatively small amount of land that's needed to square off this intersection, so that people, especially going from, um, Route 130 headed west, um, not take that corner onto Catuit Road quite so sharply. We had neighbors come talk to us about damage to their property if people's taking that intersection, uh, too quickly. So, if we don't have the funds to proceed with it, um, and we don't get town meeting, subsequent town meeting approval to construct the road, it won't get done. This allows us to move the project forward, and then we, we'll see what it costs and make a decision about whether we want to proceed with the construction. But, you know, to say that we don't have all the facts and figures when you're not allowed to, or not recommended to go ahead and do the due diligence necessary to be able to move a project forward is kind of backwards.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Louis Santos, Cituah Road, 119 Cituah Road. In answer to ladies' questions, uh, like, if you ask Raymond, who used to work for the DPW, he replaced the sign at the, at the end of Catuit Road about 15 times a year. That telephone pole, it also gets hit quite often, as I'm sure the police, fire department, and DPW is aware of. My concern is, that road used to be basically a Y. All right? It was very user-friendly, there's a lot of truck traffic that goes up and down that road, Catuit Road and 130. School buses. Has anybody watched a school bus go, try to go around that corner? The guy, the rear wheels are up on the island, the bus is rocking. Is, are we going to wait until somebody goes a little too quick and it ends up on the side? I hope it doesn't ever happens. This intersection needs to be redone. Yes, it does. It needs to be done right. But the problem that I have is, and I've worked construction all my life, and I worked for DPW, not Mashpee, another, another municipality. And if I had to go to my boss, I'm sure the town manager can appreciate this, if I was going to go to my boss and say, hey, I want to go buy some land over here, but we're going to, we just need to get approval for it with no price. Baxter, if Baxter &amp; I did, did the engineering on this intersection- Baxter, if Baxter &amp; I did the engineering on this intersection, they should have some kind of a cost estimate, a cost analysis for this, to give us as voters some kind of an idea of how much we're gonna be spending. And also, I hope this, and also, I don't see any plans. I haven't seen any plans, no notification that this was gonna be happening. Falmouth, right now, is going through a major reconstruction on Route 28. I know a lot of people that live along that stretch of 28, a lot of roads off of it. Not on 28, but all these side roads. They're notified. Hey, we're gonna have, we're gonna have, you know, a major realignment here. We're gonna have to change this intersection. You know, it would've been nice if the town could've been a little bit more transparent, and let's, let the people who're gonna be, live and use this intersection all the time, be notified. That's all I get to say. Thank you.
Mike Bronhock, DeGrasse Road. What, you said the state funds would be used? What is the percentage of state funds? We don't know a figure for repairing that, but what would state funds?
Hundred percent.
I mean, you just, that's like a blanket statement, we use state funds. Is that 4% or 100% or?
It'd be Chapter 90 funds.
Hundred percent.
100%.
100%.
Your DPW Directors, yes?
Just briefly, I just do wanna correct. We actually did have a public meeting with the Board of Selectmen. All of the abutters on Catuit Road were notified. They were, they received a direct mailing from the town. It was on the website, as well as in the local newspaper advertising that public hearing. So we did have a public hearing back in June of this year.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Donna Erdman, Leeward Lane. Is there gonna be a light, or do we have any information about how that's? I'm just trying to picture people coming from Route, from 28, coming down 130 and having to now stop, almost, to take a right there, versus it used to be a smoother transition. So, are we gonna have rear endings? Are we gonna have a light? Are we gonna have anything prior to that, to slow down the flow? Or, just curious how that's gonna work.
There will not be a traffic signal at the intersection. It does not meet the warrants for a traffic signal, so it will be a standard intersection where the traffic on Catuit Road is stopped, the traffic on Route 130 has the right-of-way.
Okay. All right, last point. Yes, ma'am?
My name's Jill Allen, I live at 432 Catuit Road, and yes, there was a meeting, but I had some concerns with that, because the way they're gonna do it, they're going to set the road up to still allow heavy trucks to go down that road. I don't understand why they can't eliminate the size of the trucks going down the road. It's a residential road, they're gonna put sidewalks up, they should reduce the traffic if they're going to realign it and everything else, and that's my concern about that intersection.
Good. Thank you. All right, we're voting on Article 15. All those in favor of Article 15 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Majority vote. Article 16. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding a new section, Section 174-17.1, to read as follows. 174-17.1, raise and replace. No pre-existing non-conforming single or two-family dwelling structure shall be torn down and rebuilt on any lot unless there is an issuance of a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Such a special permit may be granted only if the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that any changes, extensions, alterations, or reconstruction of the pre-existing non-conformities are not substantially more detrimental than exists prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area to provide sufficient parking. In no case shall new non-conformities be permitted without the issuance of a variance or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws by adding a new section, Section 174-117.1, to read as set forth in Article 16 of the warrant, with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action related thereto."
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. And Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of six to one.
Uh, Planning Board?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board. On September 27, 2018, the Planning Board held a public hearing on this article. The planning, the public hearing was continued to October 3. On October 3, 2018, the Planning Board voted to recommend approval by a 3-2 vote. Again, there were three votes in favor and two votes opposed. The votes in opposition were because additional work is needed to, in order to attempt to address the many concerns raised at the public hearing, and also because after the word "detrimental," it does not say "to the neighborhood." It should say "detrimental to the neighborhood." Thank you.
All right. Article 16. Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is John Ferbusch, from 57 Greenswood Road. I'm the Chair of the Mashpee Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to take a few moments to explain Article 16, and why the ZBA voted unanimously to sponsor this article. Currently, bylaw 174-17 states that non-conforming, single and two-family dwelling structures may be changed, extended, or altered if part of the dwelling structure remains intact. According to the literal interpretation of this bylaw, you must keep some part of the dwelling structure to be able to use 174-17 as a way to modify your structure. In many cases, it's almost impossible to leave a wall because of current building codes. What this means is, when dwelling structures is completely razed, the lot will go back to square ones and will lose all its grandfathering protections, which will leave the lot virtually unbuildable. Well, what else does this mean? I'd venture to guess that 90% of the lots in Mashpee do not meet the current minimum lot size requirement to build a house. In Zone 3, the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, and in R5, it's 80,000 square feet. So if you're part of this 90%, and you completely razed your house, you could not rebuild, because you've lost your grandfathering protection, and the lot is too small. If you have an unbuildable lot, unless you can prove a hardship involving shape, topography, or soil conditions, which in most cases is very hard to do. This is the way bylaw 174-17 currently reads. If you think it sounds unfair, then you agree with the zoning board. As a way to allow you to rebuild your house, the ZBA has proposed in addition to the current bylaw, and it's named 174-17.1, which is Article 16. 174-17.1 will allow you to rebuild your lot, as long as what is proposed is not any more non-conforming than currently exists. The final sentence of 174-17.1 states, "In no case shall any new non-conformities be created with respect to any replacement structures, without the issuance of a variance or any, take any action thereto." The opponents of the proposed bylaw will tell you that it creates McMansions, but nothing could be further from the truth, because the percent lot coverage is not changing in this article, and that's what drives larger homes. Also, they talk about New Seabury, and how it will benefit New Seabury. In fact, New Seabury is exempt from the zoning of the town, because under a special permit from 1964, all of the zoning is done by the local, uh, excuse me, the local, um, ARC. Thank you. Okay. If the new bylaw does not pass, there will continue to be few raise-and-replace projects in Mashpee. And I only can imagine the amount of tax revenues the town will not generate, and jobs lost in the trades. This will affect all the architects, developers, builders, electricians, plumbers, framers, and the list goes on. Many older homes in town will not be able to be torn down and replaced if things remain the same. The ZBA, the Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Planning Board, all voted in favor of this bylaw, and we urge you to vote yes. Thank you.
Fred Nadoff, 29 Overlook Knoll. Been, been a resident for 20 years. I'd hoped to be a full-time resident by now, but unfortunately, my, my home has been caught up in this, so, you know, the first thing I'd like to say is, this amendment was proposed to bring clarity to the, to the current bylaw, that for the last 30 years, the ZBA has used to help grow the town. You know, I think the existing zoning works currently, with very few exceptions, the ZBA has been, sorry, sorry, has been vigilant and requiring adherence to the current zoning restrictions.
Let me stop you for one second. My understanding is you're not an actual town voter, so, all those, I have to take permission to get you to speak, so. All those in favor of letting this gentleman speak, say aye.
No.
All those opposed?
No.
You're on.
It's okay, I'm sorry. So, you know, with very few exceptions, the ZBA has been vigilant in withholding all the current zoning restrictions. All the restrictions remain in place, as the zoning chairman walked through. For any new raise and replace, approvals have to go through the Board of Health, the Conservation Commission, the ZBA, you have to get a special permit for it. So this article merely allows the ZBA the discretion to do what they've been doing for the last couple of decades. Over the last few decades, new homes have added millions of dollars of assessed property values. A no vote reverses that trend, drastically reducing property values. To make up for that, the town will have, certainly have to raise the tax revenue rates. For the same reasons, a no vote will significantly decrease the much-needed tax revenue that is derived from the new homes. These new homes help pay for the schools, the library, police, fire and safety, the DPW, all the infrastructure that a town needs. Given the town's current financial challenges, both currently and in the future, the $250 million it needs for the water treatment project, et cetera, I don't think we have any chance, or we should be looking at anything that stalls tax revenues. In most cases, replacing a home is a more practical solution than remodeling a 50-year-old house that doesn't meet current code, particularly if you're in a FEMA zone. New homes are safer, they use less energy, they have a smaller carbon footprint, and they help with coastal resiliency. They have, new homes have to have dry wells to catch all the rainwater and the water runoff, and most of them will have state-of-the-art septic systems to help handle that. The older homes that they're replacing often contain hazardous materials and inferior septic systems, some still have cesspools. There's also the issue of property rights. The town planner has confirmed with the assessor that 90% of Mashpee homes are on non-conforming lots, so literally 90% of us are affected by this bylaw. The current bylaws, the current zoning bylaws contemplate this, as do the general laws of Massachusetts. So Chapter 48, Section 6 specifically accepts the owners of single or two-family non-conforming lots from new zoning requirements. A no vote needlessly puts us at odds with state laws, which result in expensive litigation for the town, diverting financial resources from all the more important priorities we have. Lastly, for the most part, the opposition of this article has been led by a small group of seasonal property owners in one neighborhood. Some of these people want Mashpee to go back to being a cottage-beach community. However, Mashpee is now a full-fledged town, requiring year-round services and infrastructure, and we can't afford to go backwards. This article benefits the full-time residents that live and work in Mashpee year-round, and require the services that I just walked through, full-time. There has been ample time for public comment, you're gonna hear that we wanna wait and study it some more, but over the past year, there's been several public hearings across the ZBA, the Planning Board, and the Board of Selectmen. The opposition to Article 16 is a couple of handfuls of seasonal homeowners against specific properties. We should not let them hijack an amendment that would benefit 90% of the full-time residents. As the Chair said, our town officials are in support of Article 16. The Board of Selectmen, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Finance Committee, the Town Planner, the Planning Board are all in favor of this amendment. They are focused on what's best for the town and its 15,000 full-time residents. A yes vote on Article 6 is what's best for the town. It protects our property values, it keeps our tax rate as low as possible, supports our schools, police, and fire, protects your property rights, and it allows for safer and more efficient homes, all while giving the ZBA the same discretion it has over the last few decades. For these reasons, we need to vote yes on Article 16. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You are.
Hi, Glenn McCarthy from 16G Place. I've been living in Mashpee on and off for 50 years.
Are you a town voter?
Sorry?
Are you a town voter?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, I'm gonna say some things people probably aren't gonna like to hear, but I think they need to be said. But before I do that, Article 16 is part of Articles, is related to Articles 17 and 18. They were all put forward by the ZBA at the same time. There's a lot of zoning articles that were put forward tonight, and none of them are any good. Okay, so when you vote on 16, think about 17 and 18. Okay? Now, it's a shame we're talking about yes or no. We should be talking about what's right. Okay, we're sitting here arguing over what's yes or what's no, as opposed to doing the right thing. And the right thing would be to fix this sloppy, ambiguous, and heavily slanted towards builders zoning bylaw. Okay? It could've been fixed by three words, which the Planning Board suggested, and didn't happen. Why don't people wanna actually have an objective zoning code? Why does it have to be subjective? And what's the rush? We haven't had a raise-and-replace law for 40 years, but now we gotta get one tonight? There's time to do it right, and I would propose that you do what other towns have done in this situation. You go in a committee, you get a group of citizens, you get the Zoning Board, you get the Planning Board, you bring in some experts, and you find a way to do it right that protects everybody. Okay? One of the issues with this is it's not protecting your rights, it's taking your rights away. What this really does is it moves the ZBA to a special permit. Okay, they can now permit this stuff by special permit. You won't know about it, you won't hear about it, there'll be no public notice, there'll be no public meeting. And if they wanna extend a nonconformance, the building inspector can do it all by himself. Okay? This is not protecting your rights, this is taking your rights away. It's taking your rights to public information away. I'd like to say a few words about special interests. We've seen a lot of advertisements, we've heard a lot of advertisements on the radio, we've read them in the newspaper. I received a mailer from the Cape and Islands Real Estate Commission, okay? When you get these messages, protect your rights, vote yes, think about who it's coming from. It's coming from builders. It's coming from people who make money from rebuilding these houses. And they're not rebuilding nice little houses on lots, and it's not good for the environment. They're taking one-bathroom houses that have, you know, two or three bedrooms, and they're building 6,000, 7,000 square-foot houses with six bathrooms and a swimming pool. And you say that that makes the water cleaner?
No.
Sorry?
Just keep going.
Okay. That doesn't make the water cleaner. The water in front of my house is already polluted. We have an algae bloom every single August. The guy that was up here before me, he wants to take a house and increase it by 500 or 600%. Okay, he did an improper perk test. Okay, he perk tested at low tide in the back of the lot. We had to take it to the municipal court. Okay, this is not helping our environment. These houses are heated all winter long, empty. It's not good for the environment, it's not good for the town, and when you hear these I got one more minute.
Go ahead.
Let me talk.
Just finish.
All right. Last thing that I'm gonna say. I'm 100% in favor of rebuilding. I think everybody should rebuild their house, I probably wanna rebuild my house. I'm 100% against this article, it's not the way to do it, it could've been done better, we'd all be a lot better off if we do it. I'm not against people with fake news who exploit the town and continue to pollute our wa- exploit the town and continue to pollute our water. So, let's get it right, folks. This is not right. Thank you very much, and I'm sorry if I offended anybody, but I think Dennis Belsarini said it, you got to come up and speak your mind, and that's my mind. Thank you very much.
Town Planner.
Good evening again, Evan Lara, Town Planner. With due respect to the gentleman who just spoke, I would refute the vast majority of the points you just made, and I want to go through a little, a few of them, one by one. First, with regard to the protection of your property rights, this article absolutely would protect the rights of single and two-family homeowners in the town of Mashpee to rebuild their properties for the following reason. Mash General Law, Chapter 48, is the Zoning Act. The Zoning Act protects single and two-family homeowners by freezing the zoning at the time of the lot's creation in place. So, Chairman Ferbusch's assertion that 90% of the lots in the town of Mashpee residential lots are being non-conforming is completely correct. I went through the assessor's database. The assessor's data shows that only 10.3% of Mashpee residential parcels are one acre or more. That precludes that at minimum, 90% of the town of Mashpee is pre-existing non-conforming. So, if you want to tear your property down because it's on a cinder block foundation, the septic system is old, and it's leaking human waste into your, into the estuaries, these are the problems that we're dealing with. If you're to reduce your structure to grade, you then no longer have a structure in place to have grandfathered rights. If it's gone, you lose those grandfathered rights, and you cannot rebuild on your property because you don't have the lot area. You can't meet the side setbacks under current zoning, so you take your house down. No structure can go back up on that property under current zoning. So, if this is something that would affect you, or in the future you'd want to do it, or you want to leave a house to your children, and you want to rebuild that property, and replace the septic system to improve the water quality, to have more energy-efficient construction and better windows, to have a safer home for your families, this is a very common sense article that, and with regard to the special permit process, special permit regulations require notification to a butters with at least a two-week notification. So, if it's, if a special permit decision is to be made, it is law to notify the butters to that property. So, I wanted to clear up some, I've seen a lot of what I would call propaganda going around town with regard to this article. The facts are the facts, and if we want to enable property owners to construct homes that are safe for our families and that are within the scope of the zoning bylaw that was established at the time of the lot's creation, this is a smart move. And I would, I would posit that this, that to vote no would be a mistake for the future of the town of Mashpee. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. My name is John Lynch, and I'm from 25 Overlook Knoll in Mashpee. I want to make it clear, I'm speaking in opposition to the article, but I want to make it clear that undersized, non-conforming lots in Mashpee have issues, and homeowners absolutely should be allowed to rebuild. They should be allowed to raise and replace. However, Mashpee's zoning bylaws since 1979 has not had a raise and replace article. Proposed Article 16, we feel, is not the answer. It needs more work and citizen input. We had a meeting before the Planning Board last week, and it was agreed by two, the Chairman, Mr. Ferbusch, and his associate chair, on questioning from the Chairman of the Planning Board, that they would agree and participate in community meetings designed to put some criteria into a raise and replace article, some safeguards, so that people who are buying property, selling property, real estate agents, developers, and so on and so forth, would have some clear, balanced criteria in which to make a decision about the property. This has never happened. We've never had that citizen input. The Planning Board voted 3 to 2, a split decision, but you heard the chairperson say that the concerns of the minority were that the article obviously needs more work. What the article does, it creates a dual standard. If somebody does not have an existing nonconformity, when they go to improve their property, raise, replace, whatever, they have to get a variance. However, the way this article is now structured, if you have a pre-existing nonconformity, you're entitled to avoid that procedure under the proposed bylaw, and proceed with a special permit and not a variance. It's a lesser safeguard, and there are no standards in there to define what a pre-existing nonconformity is. It's ripe for litigation, because when you read this thing, it's ambiguous, and it's going to be troublesome going forward. Moreover, the standard in there is left solely under the control of the Zoning Board. We have Zoning Board members who are from the building community predominantly, and they will have the exclusive jurisdiction to make the call as to whether something is more detrimental. They don't say to the neighborhood, they've eliminated that, and it's in their sole discretion. I think that is very problematic and undemocratic and makes no sense. Neighborhoods should have...
All right, let's try to keep it a little quicker, because you've got a lot of people behind you, sir.
Neighborhoods should have protection, standards, and clarity. So, our suggestion is that, yes, let's have a raise and replace article, but let's have one that makes some sense, that's balanced, and doesn't allow the construction of these monstrous homes in smaller neighborhoods, where everybody else is aligned in cookie-cutter fashion and, you know, just following the rules.
Okay. All right. I have to move on, sir. Over here.
May I make a couple more points?
No.
No.
Good evening. My name is Thomas J. O'Neill, and I live at 174 Dunrobin. I've lived in this town for 26 years, had a business, and been very involved in raising places for the last 26 years. Today, I was at a house where a family had inherited a home, a mother and father had designed a home, a very '60s structure. As it turned out, the house had asbestos in it. Eventually, the whole house had to be remediated for asbestos, completely gutted. The house remains now a shell, and the house is non-conforming, the lot is non-conforming, the foundation is from the '60s. There are no dry walls, it has 2x3 construction, has Masonite walls. If this article doesn't pass, I have nothing to offer those people, other than to try to work with that existing 1960s asbestos-formally-laid-in home, improperly built. We have effectively created healthy homes for everyone. You heard 90%. This isn't for wealthy people, this isn't for poor people, this is for all in our community. We all have very small lots. We have homes that were built not up to today's standards, they were never meant to live in year-round, and we are going around correctly building these homes. There's nothing evil about being, rebuilding a home. If you are at that stage of your life where you are able to do that, everyone should be happy that you are able to do that. And the reality is that there is, that Article 16 will allow this town to have a healthy stock. If it doesn't pass, all we'll have is remodeling and small additions, and that will not be sufficient to allow people to live in this town year-round. So, I would help support 16.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you to the town of Mashpee. My name is Marissa Torni. I am a seasonal resident with my mom and dad.
All right, hold on.
Yep.
Give this young lady a chance to speak. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm sorry. Want to try it one more time? Those in favor of her speaking, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Sorry. Try it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Jim Kelly. I live at 30 Overlook Knoll. I've been a...
To speak up. And I just want to tell everybody, get to the point, because there's a lot of speaking, people getting tired. Just get right to the point. Go ahead, sir.
Is that, is that working?
It's working, yes.
Yeah, speak a little closer.
Anyways, I'm here to oppose, raise, there it goes, it's, yeah, the oppose the raise and replace. And the reason I'm doing that is because I heard Mr. Ferbusch say earlier that you need variance from them that he creates, or he determines. Why can't the people do that? We don't want to leave it up to six, I mean, chosen officials to make that point. In other words, a neighbor can't even say, "Look, he's too close to be," or whatever. If they think it's detrimental, then they get it, instead of the neighborhood saying, "Look, that's detrimental, that doesn't fit in here." My point being also, is that on a house, how come all these houses on Pappanessett Beach of 6, 7, 8, 10,000 square feet get a variance on a small postage stamp lot, when the poor guy over in Pirate's Cove or whatever can't get his house over there, it's got 10,000 square feet, which is bigger than those lots you built these McMansions on? I think it's up to the people. I think the people should have the last say, not the Zoning Board that's appointed, not elected. So, they don't have to really answer to the people. I don't think that's right. And the other thing is, we're putting those big places up there with these septics, it's ruining our water. There's no doubt about it. The gentleman already spoke about it being, you know, so let's, let's just think about that. Your estuaries are already polluted. So, anyways, that's my point.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Steve Cook. I reside at 43 Brewster Road. Just going back to what Jonathan Ferbusch said, yeah, I'm on top of it.
Hold on.
Okay.
I'm not going to move the question with this. People standing up wanting to talk. If anybody wants to talk, get up now, because this is going to be cut off at this point. All right? Go ahead.
All right. So, as Mr. Ferbusch mentioned, if this article gets turned down, you can't do raise and replace because you lose your grandfather-in-rights. The only alternative, as he said, is to construct an addition and leave part of the existing house. The current bylaw states that you can build a 2 and 1/2-story structure, it's a 20% lot coverage for lots, and 25% for 10,000 square foot or less, and there's setback requirements. So, the board is bound by those setback requirements and lot requirements. So, if you're in Pappanessett, you have a 6,000 square foot lot, you can build up to 25% of that lot on a footprint, and you can do 2 and 1/2 stories. So, the argument about large homes and small lots, there's requirements. It's already in the bylaw, that's not changing. It's already there. So, someone in Pappanessett can keep part of their house and build a 2 and 1/2-story addition, and meet all the lot requirements, and meet all the setback and lot coverage bylaw. So, the argument about the large homes doesn't carry any weight on that end of it. Thank you.
Alana Doyle, 148 Sunset Strip. I just have a question. If my house is unconforming as it stands right now, if it were to burn down to the ground tomorrow, would I be able to rebuild it as it stands today?
Hypothetical, I'm not going to answer that. Does the ZBA want to answer that question?
I believe that there is a bylaw that will allow you to rebuild on a fire. I'm not sure. Maybe Town Council can answer that.
The Town Council believes if it's a casualty, by the definition of law, you can rebuild.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? All right, we're getting towards the end. Let's go. Yes, sir.
As quick as possible. Hans Briggs, 23G Place. On that last question, actually, just a clarification. So, if there is a hurricane, like in that mailer that went around, we could truly build our own homes?
Yes.
So, that article is incorrect, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, I kind of figured. So, that said, I'll make it quick, as quick as possible, that is. My biggest concern here is environment and green space. I know we've got protections as far as lot coverage and so on and so forth, but I am concerned with, obviously, the, how far away the house can be from the lot lines and such. Right now, we've got a ton of drainage issues. Yes, I do live in Pappanessett. Yes, my son surfs in the middle of the road for several days in a row after a rainstorm. Yes, I've heard developers say it's a low-lying area, but come on. It's simple, common sense here. We need green space in order to have drainage, okay? Number two, environmental issues. Highly respected environmentalists, they compile study after study after study. There's nitrogen leaching into our groundwater, polluting our waters and our estuaries. I understand people are saying, "Oh, there's, these new houses are going to be environmentally friendly." Really, you know, how does that 8,000 square foot, six-bedroom house more environmentally friendly? I get it. And finally, there's tax implications. You know, we need to be aware, you know, that these huge houses may offset our taxes temporarily, but who is going to pay for the cleanup of our estuaries after the fact, and deal with all these drainage issues after the fact? That's all I have to say.
Okay. Yes, sir. Two more after, this group, and that's it. Let's go.
All right, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
Kevin Dunn, 21 Greensward Circle. So, driving in tonight, it was apparent to me that whatever the town has been doing over the past 25 or 30 years...
That's okay. Go ahead.
Over the past 25 or 30 years, has been working pretty well. We recently bought a home here, my wife and I, and decided to retire here. We've been here for five years. And it's been a great, a great community. You see the great up-and-coming school systems, what's going on from a town development standpoint. And I attribute that a lot to our leaders. And I heard someone mention earlier this evening that we should put some more faith in the leadership that we have. And I'm not sure that it's a, I'm not sure that, to respectfully disagree with someone that was up here earlier, that this is a right or wrong issue. I think this is an issue of moving forward for the town of Mashpee or moving backwards. And I propose, and because of the complexity of this issue, and zonings and bylaws, and you could get, you could get a popsicle headache, I'm going to put my faith in the Mashpee Finance Committee who approved, the Board of Selectmen who approved, the Zoning Board of Appeals who approved, the Building Inspector, the Planning Board. Those are the leaders of our community. We have a voice. We're not, this is, this is not, not democracy. We have a voice, and these are our elected officials, and the people that we put in charge of these complex issues. I'm making my decision on what the experts say about this.
Okay, thank you. I see three people, and that's it.
Hello, my name is Joan Muse. I live at 19...
You're not going to be heard. Speak up.
My name is Joan Muse. I live at 19 Captain's Row. And I would like to remind the people here that 90% of the town, 90% people are living, most of you, I would guarantee, probably 90% of everyone in this room, is living on a non-conforming lot. The area that is exempt, where the most of the McMansions are in the town of Mashpee, is New Seabury. This does not apply to New Seabury. This applies to John's Pond, and Briarwood, and Catuit Road, and Timberlane Drive, and Monmouth Goy Island, and Zokonset Island. It applies to the rest of the town. And if... And if someone were to be forced to keep a wall and rebuild in that place, let's say they have hypothetically a half-acre lot. Now, if they wanted to upgrade their septic system, the septic systems are not as they were in the 50s or 60s or 70s. The septic systems now bring in a caterpillar to put in practically a half of a football field to conform with Board of Health and the new septic regulations. So where are you going to put the house if you can't move it and you're restricted to leaving one wall? It makes no sense. And to force people to leave a wall and a structure that otherwise would be just torn down and staying in that same footprint, to me, is insane. And like I say, the area of town that is not affected is New Seabury. And I bet a whole lot of people in this room are not from New Seabury today.
All right, next person. Two more. Let's go. Let's go. Debbie, let's go. Resident?
I'm not a resident.
Not a resident. Those people... Those who'd like her to speak, say aye. Those opposed? We're down to the last gentleman.
Real quick, Brian Baumgartel, 119 DeGrasse Road, also the Chair of your Board of Health. Sorry, I got to get real close to this thing. I apologize. I just wanted to offer a real quick Board of Health perspective with respect to raise and replace. When you tear down a house per the Title V regulations, if you're increasing the flow, which means adding a bedroom, you are now subject to the full sort of force of Title V. There are ways that you can sort of look outside of your lot through nitrogen aggregation plans to be able to do a little bit more with the number of bedrooms, but you do have to come before the Board of Health regardless of really this regulation. So, thank you.
Okay. I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 16 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
We'll do a vote. Raise your cards. All those in favor, raise your cards.
Boy, your cards aren't high enough. Raise your card. Yeah, I'm talking to you. What's this?
The same ones.
If they do a recount because of him, we're in trouble. You're in trouble.
Probably not those groups over there. It's like 100% same.
Same group.
Same group as for marijuana.
Oh, yeah.
Need a bigger house, have more friends come over and smoke on that weed.
Honestly, I... Whatever. I'm just, I'm not even sure. I know it's 20. People that get addicted to drugs, they say it's the gateway.
Didn't even hear him say no.
Hey, you know what, though?
That argument's out the door. It's already legal.
The only thing that came out at the night...
That's Joe Salin. Yes, so that must have been the... The remainder must have been the last one.
The amount of money that's coming in for this is way overestimating. The amount of money that's going to generate is way over.
Oh, yeah. It's way over. It's far, it's just so way over. Double. You've got to cut all those numbers in half.
All those opposed, raise your cards. Okay. I declare a two-thirds vote in favor, 281 to 67. I now need a motion to extend town meeting until we conclude, until 11 o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Town meeting is extended until 11 o'clock. Article 17. See if the town will vote to delete in its entirety Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws and replace it as follows. I'm not going to read it. I'll take a motion from Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
One more time.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate, approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of 7 to 0.
Planning Board.
Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board, on September 27, 2018. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this article. It was continued to October 3, 2018. On October 3, 2018, the Planning Board voted unanimously to not recommend approval as this article eliminates grandfathering of property rights.
Zoning Board.
Hi, John Ferbush from the Zoning Board, 57 Greensward Road. Again, as the Finance Committee said, this article seeks to delete a duplication of efforts by the Zoning Board and the Building Inspector. It allows the Building Inspector to verify the project's compliance with setback requirements and eliminates the need to bring it to the Zoning Board. This will streamline the process and make it easier for the applicant. That's all it is.
Actually, it's not.
Hold on. Mr. Fadala.
Okay, Tom Fadala, 60 Willand Road. This article, as the Planning Board Chairman says, eliminates provisions in the current zoning bylaw that grandfather properties to the zoning that was in effect at the time the house was built. In other words, all those non-conforming lots and non-conforming houses, you can't rebuild. Good, we passed the last one because you couldn't rebuild under the current zoning. But right now, you can... This article is just saying you have to conform with current zoning. And it has the Building Inspector saying whether or not you conform with current zoning. It does that already. But what it's not telling you is that it's deleting the section of the zoning bylaw, Current 7174, saying that says, "Nonconforming single or two-family dwelling structures may be changed, extended, or altered if such change, extension, or alteration complies with the divenchal requirements applicable as on under the current provisions," which is the current zoning, "or for lots which have been developed pursuant to Section 17421, complies with such requirements as were applicable to initial construction of the dwelling under the provisions of 17421." And 17421, which first non-conforming lots, references, first of all, the Section 48, Section 6, that the town planner mentioned earlier. That provides that the zoning that affects your property is the zoning that was in effect... And you got this a little wrong as far as the courts. At the time, the lot became separately owned from all the adjacent land. You're going to lose that protection if you pass this article. The fourth section of that section was specifically added in 2005 because we have a whole bunch of former cluster subdivisions, such as Sandalwood, where Slick Monahera lives, Greenwood Estates, Seabrook Village, Little Neck Bay. They were done without the benefit of a special permit, which would normally protect your zoning as of the date the special permit was used. So this article, the way it's written, is going to eliminate protection of all of those lots, those 90% or whatever. And the 90% isn't really right because it's New Seabury and all kinds of special permits. But in any case, this is a bad article. It's not doing what is... It's going to create a situation where in order to do anything to modify your house that's on a non-conforming lot, you will have to go to the zoning board for a variance. And that's like, the last one gave, this one has taken away what you've already got when you're not totally rebuilding the house. It's a bad article. It eliminates grandfathering. It hurts those 90% of people in town, whatever the number is, and it should be defeated.
Any other discussion on Article 17? Seeing none. Need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 17 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It's defeated. Article 18. See if the town will vote to amend Section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws by deleting the language in its entirety and replacing it as follows. 174-33, setbacks from water and wetlands. Any building or structure exclusive of fixed or floating piers, wharves, docks, bridges, or boardwalks shall be set back from water or wetland as the Conservation Commission shall determine in accordance with Chapter 172 of the Town of Mashpee general bylaws, take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, move the town vote to amend Section 174-33 of the zoning bylaws by deleting the language of the current bylaw section in its entirety and replacing it as set forth in Article 18 with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
Motion made in finance, and second at Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of 7 to 0.
Planning Board.
Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board, on September 27. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this meeting, on this article, sorry, and it was continued to October 3. On October 3, 2018, the Planning Board voted unanimously to not recommend approval as the article eliminates from zoning the protective 50-foot buffer from wetlands. Please take careful note. This elimination of the 50-foot buffer is missing from the explanation of this article in your town meeting booklet. In October 2016, a similar warrant article, Article 19, was voted down by town meeting. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, John Ferbush again, Zoning Board.
Long time.
Currently, the Conservation Commission reviews all wetland setbacks and submits their findings. Applying to the Zoning Board of Appeals for relief on setback duplicates what are already granted by the Conservation Commission. The Zoning Board has always relied on the Conservation Commission's recommendation and we follow their lead as, really, they are the experts.
Okay, any further discussion on Article 18? Seeing none. Need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 18 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's defeated. Article 19. See if the town will vote to amend Chapter... Section 174-37 of the zoning bylaws by adding the following sentence to the end of the paragraph as follows. Section 174-37, in the I-1 zoning district, parking facilities shall be located on any side of the building or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend Section 174-37 of the zoning bylaws by adding the following sentence to the end of paragraph as follows. Section 174-37, in the I-1 zoning district, parking facilities shall be located on any side of the building.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends the town meeting approval by a vote of 7 to 0.
Planning Board.
Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board, on October... Sorry, September 27, 2018. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this article. The public hearing continued to October 3. On October 3, 2018, the Planning Board voted unanimously to not recommend approval. The article eliminates from protective zoning the prohibition of having parking lots in the front and the Planning Board does not agree with the aesthetics of that, even in the industrial zone.
Hi, again, John Ferbush from the Zoning Board. This article deals with industrial zone lots in I-1. These lots are outside the general public view. The current bylaw doesn't even allow parking in front of the building. This bylaw will remove that restriction. I think it makes perfect sense.
Okay.
John Vale in Dover Road. I just want to say, just right around, and I know Tom's going to give him a talk because he's a big proponent of this, but just think about the buildings that are down in the industrial park. I do not know why they have a restriction of parking in front of the building. It makes no sense to me. It makes no sense, who's running a business, why you have to put the parking around the sides of the rear. If people are coming to the building, you still have to make handicap parking available in the front. So it makes no sense to me why we have this bylaw. And I just think it would be easier for the businesses to build their buildings and to access the buildings if we allow some parking in front, especially in these areas in the industrial park.
Well said. Okay, Mr. Fadala, quickly, please.
All right. This requirement, the current requirement that parking be on the side of the rear was specifically adopted to improve the appearance of commercial industrial properties aesthetically because ugly development previously permitted and is consistent with the design guidelines of the Cape Cod Commission as well as the intent of the town planner's light industrial overlay district to attract a higher class of development or industrial districts, which contrary to the explanation by the ZBA, front roads very visible to the public such as Mercantile Way, Commercial Street, and Route 28. The ugly development reduces the property values of adjacent industrial property serves to discourage office and other higher-class economic development or industrial districts. The ZBA permits, which it seeks to enforce with this article even for projects requiring the planning board approval, have resulted in even more ugly developments such as the recent atrocity called Mercantile Place on Mercantile Way. This is especially ironic as Article 12 of the October 20, 2003 Town Meeting Warrant, which created this requirement, was submitted to town meeting jointly by the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and the ZBA itself. Down with ugly development, all right? There's no reason that we have to have ugly development parking lots in front of the building. Side and rear is fine. There's no explanation for not doing that.
Yes. Town Planner.
I do agree with my predecessor on this article. We have to start designing places for people and not for cars. And there is frontage in our industrial districts on our primary thoroughfares and parking belongs not in the front of buildings. It belongs on the side or the rear of the buildings. We need, again, to build places for people and not for cars. I will always urge this notion. Thank you.
Okay. No further discussion on Article 19. All those in favor, I need a two-thirds vote on Article 19. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Defeated. Article 20. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws table of use regulations by deleting Section 174-25I, or I, subsection 9, in its entirety or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws table of use regulations by deleting Section 174-25I, 9, in its entirety.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second at Finance Committee.
Try this again. The Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of 7 to 0.
Planning Board.
Mary Wagon, Chair of the Planning Board, on September 27, 2018. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this article. The public hearing continued to October 3. On that day, the Planning Board voted unanimously to not recommend approval as it removes protection of a special permit on docks that are 70 feet or longer in length. This was put in place to protect the wetlands. Thank you.
Zoning Board.
John Ferbush, Zoning Board. Again, as the Finance Committee said, this article seeks to amend the zoning bylaw table that eliminates a redundant approval process for fixed and floating piers, wharves, docks... that eliminates a redundant approval process for fixed and floating piers, wharfs, docks, and boardwalks. All we do is really listen to the experts, the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to have a...offer to have a reconsideration for Raise and Replace on Article 16, please. I have the time. I got another eight minutes left, so I'd like to...I'd like to have it. It's under the bylaws, you're allowed to do that within 30 minutes.
What article is that? No, what article?
It has not. We've been timing it. We've been timing it.
That was Article 16, 1012. Yep. Within the timeframe.
Everybody left, though. That's not fair.
The town bylaw...
That's not fair at all.
It's fair, it's fine. Stay till the end of the meeting.
As soon as 16 was voted on, everybody left.
Stay to the meeting.
Specifically, the bylaw calls for the person who makes that motion to have voted in favor of it. So I'd ask you, sir, did you vote in favor of it?
No, I voted no. No, no.
If you didn't, you can't make your motion.
Why's that, then? Just explain, please.
Bylaw. It's the rules.
The rule said you can do it within 30 minutes. You can call for a revote within 30 minutes. And now we're down to six minutes. That's what it says. Or else we'll be litigating this forever.
Hold on. We're checking.
Sure.
Reconsideration. No vote should be re...here it is, Gary.
Second.
I wanna go through them in school a couple of times. I'm sorry, it's just 30 minutes. Oh, I would...you know, I... No, it's younger. I thought it was 20 minutes, within 20 minutes. He said it's 30. He said 30, but I thought it was 20. Wasn't it before 10 o'clock? I don't think so. It's the meeting was continued. You allow the meeting to continue.
Yes. No, majority. Or if...no, it's...what was the...other's two...the same one.
How does a reconsideration...then...
Right. So you only need a majority to reconsider.
Yeah.
And you only need one-third to be...
There's a town bylaw that can be anything. Correct?
Jerry? It's a motion...it's a majority then, a two-thirds, right?
Yeah, no, it's a majority.
You'd need two-thirds. You'd need two-thirds to pass.
Okay, we're gonna vote to move to reconsider.
It's gotta be a majority vote. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 16, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed?
No!
Come on, Dennis, now. Be a good sport now. Come on, Dennis.
Okay, Article 20. Where'd we leave off? Someone? Yes, sir.
Drew McManus, Town of Mashpee Conservation Agent, speaking about Article 20.
Yep.
Going back to that article.
We are.
As Conservation Agent for the town, it would be far be it from me to reduce any environmental protections. My opinion on this article is that I'm in favor of it because, as Mr. Furbush already explained, there is no separate set of criterion to evaluate docks over 70 feet in length as this article covers currently. The Conservation Commission has a wetland protection bylaw that we use to evaluate projects, including docks and piers. So my question is, what different set of criterion for review is there in addition to the Conservation Commission? And I think that's what people should really be thinking about when it comes to voting on this article. Thank you.
Okay. Building Inspector, you a town meeting voter?
No.
For those who would like to hear from the Building Inspector, say aye. Those opposed?
He was hoping for a no.
Where are my no votes? So I was really looking forward to those.
Caroline talked.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Mendoza. I am your Building Commissioner and your Zoning Enforcement Officer.
You get it, boy.
About this article, all it is, is trying to do away with duplication. They go to Conservation. Conservation looks at it. Shellfish Water looks at it. Harbor Master looks at it. They all look at it. Then currently, as the bylaw is written, it's sent to the ZBA. In all respects to the Board, all they do is the Conservation say it was okay. Conservation says, yep, we got the thing from Conservation, it's okay. They grant it. There's no building permit involved. So if you go to dock, you go to Conservation, then you end up going to the ZBA for what? Confirmation that Conservation did their job? Is that really what you're doing? You're paying $100, $200, $300 just for that purpose? Trying to save you a few bucks here, but it's up to you.
All those in favor of Article 20, I need a two-thirds vote. Say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed?
No!
It passes. Article 21, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Hey, this is a petition article. You're on.
Okay. So, Mary Wagon, 35, Asshument Road. I'm the petitioner for this article. I wanna thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank everybody who's been following the proposed expansion of Mashpee Commons. I make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article as the Planning Board has submitted a list of 25 questions to Mashpee Commons, and Mashpee Commons is currently preparing the answers. I believe it is prudent to wait until we have more information from Mashpee Commons before moving ahead. Again, I make a motion to indefinitely postpone this article.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussions on indefinitely postponing Article 21? Seeing none. All those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article 21, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? Unanimous. All right. Article 22. I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
Second.
Motion.
Made and seconded.
I have it.
Who's got it?
I do.
Ms. Sherman.
I move the town indefinitely postpone Article 23.
Motion made to indefinitely postpone?
No, 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 no. No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Article 22.
Page 35.
It's a petition.
Petition article. Let's go out here.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm what, standing between you and going home, I think. Chris is...
Just about.
I move the town to vote to approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or to take any other action relating thereto.
Okay.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends town meeting approval by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Any discussion on Article 22?
The Planning Board recommends this article.
Okay. Was it in the memo? Any discussion? Everybody approves it so far. Okay, I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 22 as moved, say aye.
Aye!